So it is six fifteen and we're going to open the select board meeting. I will give the introduction again, just in case somebody tuned in. Welcome to the April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being recorded, live streamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast ninety-eight, Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website, www.easterncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned, for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@eastern.ma.us or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. I'd like to congratulate and welcome our two new Select Board members, Jamie Stebbins and Jennifer Stacy. And we're happy that you're going to be bringing your experience, perspective, and enthusiasm to our board. Meeting on video is a little different than meeting in person because I don't have the visual cues that someone wants to make a comment or ask a question. So when we do a roll call or make our comments, we generally go in the order with the chair commenting or voting last, and in the order that we'll be doing this will be Barger, Lamb, Stebbins, Stacy, and myself. So I've been so used to saying it in a different order, please bear with me if I stumble on that a little bit. And if you have a question or a comment outside of that process, please just raise your hand in real life or electronically to the board member. So it just makes it a little bit more organized, so we don't speak over each other. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stebbins.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Terrific. So the first item on the agenda is going to be moved a little bit, the Parkinson's Awareness Month, we're going to do after the, help me out here Connor.
It's, sorry, it's item eight on the agenda. It's a discussion of vote, Contract War DPW twenty-twenty-one eight relating to PFAS Filtered Water Distribution Machine. Just because Dave and Rich have another meeting starting in thirteen minutes. So thank you, Dottie, for agreeing to that up. So for the board's benefit in your packet, associated with item eight, there's a memo and a draft contract submitted by DPW Director Dave Field, who is here with us tonight. This contract is associated with providing a distribution site at the Eastern Water Division for folks in Eastern who are in a sensitive subgroup per the DEP regs relating to PFAS, which would be folks who are pregnant or breastfeeding and infants and those who may have compromised immune systems to fill up water that's filtered for PFAS if they so choose at no cost to them. This obviously does come with a cost to the town and the Water Division. It's estimated at roughly forty-three thousand and change for twelve months. This would be born out of the Water Division budget. This is an interim step available while we advance funding for the PFAS treatment plants for the capital budget this year, which we'll speak about more tonight. And in the wake of DEP encouraging us to effectively mothball the home filter program that we launched a couple of years ago. So Director Fields here to walk the board through any questions you may have about that.
Sure. David, I'd like you to just do a recap for the people at home, just talking about, you know, why all of a sudden is PFAS a problem for us? And how do they change the way they measure that so that people don't, you know, there's a lot of questions about this because people are just start, you know, we've been talking about it for more than a year, but people are just starting to learn more about it. So if you could just give us a little high-level overview.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so PFAS has been probably in our water for a number of years. We don't know the source of the PFAS. But it's probably been there for a while. EPA came up with an emergent contaminant of PFAS and asked all water systems of a certain size to test for PFAS, and this is back in two thousand thirteen. Eastern was one of those communities that did. We tested on a parts-per-billion scale, and it was not detected at that time. It's since testing has progressed and the science behind PFAS and and the potential dangers of PFAS have emerged more recently, the testing is down now to a parts-per-trillion scale. We were ahead of the game as far as testing requirements because we replaced our well number four in the same spot as our old well four, but we were required to test for PFAS at that time ahead of many other water districts who didn't start testing until this year. At that time, we did find some elevated levels of PFAS above the proposed regulation at the time of twenty parts-per-trillion. And then we started testing the remaining wells we had online. So basically, we have two wells that have elevated levels above the twenty. The other, we have one well that has close to twenty, and then we have the other wells are well below the twenty. So that's really kicked us into this PFAS timeline. And again, we get that question a lot right now is, well, when did the town know about this and why did I just get this notice? We just sent the notice out because we're required to. We just went into violation because we our testing for the last quarter came up that we had elevated levels of PFAS. It wasn't a regulation before this year, and once we had those three consecutive tests that showed we had elevated levels of PFAS, we immediately worked with DEP to send the required notice, the public education and public notice of our violation. Everyone should have gotten that. Landlords, everyone that, you know, tenants and everything else hopefully have received that notice. And then this contract is for Blue Drop to put in a vending machine, which will serve basically those sensitive subgroups that are recommended to not drink the water if they're in that sensitive subgroup until we can get a permanent treatment plant online.
And we do have a page on the website that talks specifically about PFAS, and I think that, you know, what, where that comes from, it's the materials that are used in manufacturing to prevent sticking. So your pots and pans that are, you know, have that like coating over it, the non-stick coating. It can be on dental floss. It can be on certain types of waterproof clothing. A lot of places that had big firefighting, you know, practices, it can come off firefighters jackets. And, you know, we have entered into a lawsuit against the manufacturers of PFAS, which is DuPont and I think it was Dow Chemical. We've done that in the past year. We really care about this issue, and we've been really working hard to be proactive about it. So I do want to thank you, Connor and David. I know that Connor, you can talk about this a little bit after the comments about what your role will be going on on a statewide level as one of the subject matter experts on PFAS, which is, you know, the good news and the bad news, we were very proactive and out in front of it and did a lot of education ourselves. Other communities are saying they don't have PFAS in the water because they haven't been testing to the parts-per-trillion metric. So we're not doing anything different than we have all these past years. It's just that the measurement changed. As soon as we knew about it, we took immediate action on it, and I hope that that's reassuring to the people in our community because we want to make sure our water is always, you know, been terrific, and we want to make sure that it stays healthy for us. So Craig, if you have any comments or questions?
No, I just appreciate the work that David and Connor have done and Rich have done in anticipation of the twenty parts-per-trillion.
And Mark?
Yes, I do have a couple of comments and questions. And regarding PFAS, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, Eastern is so far ahead of this more than any other community. And I've gotten a lot of calls over the past week since this mailer went out. And I know that we've been capturing data for a long time. Other communities just started capturing data. Because we've been capturing data, and Dave, please correct me if I'm wrong, because we've been capturing data for so long, it takes like a quarter or a half a year of results to gather to then force that, that mailer that went out. So because we were so far ahead of it, we're one of the first ones to be forced to put out the mailer. Other communities are going to get that mailer too. They just were not ahead of the ball, so they don't have the data captured to force that out. So when you receive that, like, you know, people are concerned. But what I would say is that's actually because we're so ahead of it. Nothing's really changed. And for the past year, we couldn't have been more transparent about all of this, which is another thing I've been very adamant about. So, I mean, hats off to Dave, Connor. You guys were absolutely ahead of the package. Absolutely no surprise, Connor, that you're going to be in a position with the state as an expert on this topic. So kudos to you on that. But I do have a question on this Blue Drop machine. Where is it? Could you tell me about it?
Sure. It's going to be located at the Water Division Building at four seventeen Bay Road. That's just south of the fire station, number three. It'll be attached to the building. It'll be a self, a freestanding vending unit. You'll, you see similar units at grocery stores and and other in parking lots. There'll be a vending unit that people can come and fill up jugs, one three-gallon jugs. And it's going to be filtered inside the Water Division Building. There's going to be additional filters on it for PFAS to remove the PFAS, and it'll be tested to ensure that the PFAS is lower than the twenty parts-per-trillion as required. And that's an interim step until we can get our full PFAS treatment on at the three well stations of concern, which we hope to have up and running within twelve to eighteen months. But again, this is an interim step for that purpose.
Excellent. Thank you.
Jamie, comments, questions?
Just one quick question about Norton. Are there a few homes in Norton being right on the line that are affected that have Eastern Water Supply?
Don't know that offhand. I think that that may be the case. Anytime town lines, it's, it's, does happen. I don't know that offhand though, and I'd have to check with my staff on that.
Yeah, no problem. I only brought it up, and I can't put my finger on it right now, but somewhere in the, in the packet tonight, I saw Norton mentioned. I can find it, but I don't have it on my fingertips.
Yeah, that was, that's a holdover from Blue Drops. They, they previously had an RO system for iron and manganese at Norton Town Hall, and so I think that's, that was just a holdover. That'll be corrected on the official notification.
Thank you, Dave. That's exactly what I saw. Yeah, thanks.
And Jen?
Hi, I have a few questions, but first I do want to just echo what's been said already and say, this has been a fantastic effort for getting ahead of what is not a fun situation when it comes to pollutants and other chemicals of concern. So thank you for being ahead of that for the benefit of the community, and I'm really glad that we're tackling this with the treatment plant and term steps. The first question is, this may be a Connor question, is why was the, the water filter program mothballed by the state?
That's a good question. So to Dave's point, we started this testing a couple of years before the regulation kicked in and kind of blending Mark's feedback he's heard of, well, why is this regulatory notice coming now? And that's because the regulation went into effect weeks ago for testing. At the time, DEP suggested, well, you can put a notice on your website back in two thousand nineteen and kind of check the box and call it a day because the regulation doesn't exist yet. And we said, well, let's have, let's bring it to the Select Board and have a public meeting about it and talk about it. And at that time, we launched that rebate program. There was no requirement to do so, but we felt that, you know, we generally, just as a business practice here, don't like bringing things forward that are an issue with zero solutions. I think that's just not good governance. So that's where, you know, DPW got the idea of, okay, well, here's an interim step people can take if they're concerned. And the reason why we've been encouraged to mothball that is because now that the new state regulation is in effect, it is at a stricter standard than the then and current US EPA Health Advisory. So the US EPA Health Advisory is seventy parts-per-trillion, which all of our wells are actually under. The new DEP reg is twenty parts-per-trillion, and so it's basically that gray area of twenty versus seventy that, that led to this, which is basically that a lot of those filters are probably national products and are not necessarily tested down to the new Massachusetts standard. And so the DEP said if the town wanted to continue to have that on the shelf, so to speak, as our interim step, we would need to contract with laboratory scientists to basically go into people's houses and test their water post-filter to certify independently each of these products, which we frankly don't think was, is a good thing to do. So that's why we moved to the alternative, which will be installing this service.
David?
I just want to add too that this was a suggestion of MassDEP at the time in two thousand nineteen when we started this rebate program. This was on their website, and this was one of their toolboxes, a recommendation in their toolbox. So that's why we adopted that. But unfortunately, it's no longer, you know, valid anymore, so.
So what are the other interim steps or interim guidance for members of the community who, you know, we still recommending that folks should get their filtration system, even though there's another rebate program in the interim, or what other steps can homeowners and residents take to ensure that they're kind of addressing this during the gap?
Yeah, and that's a great question. Like I said, we can't really, you know, encourage the filter program because there's no standard right now to get to the twenty. So unless you're going to test it yourself, that's, you know, something we can't just say, it'll probably work, but unless it's tested, we don't know that. If you're, if you're a healthy individual, not in a sensitive subgroup, this is a lifetime standard in, in MassDEP advises that, you know, this is a lifetime of seventy years of drinking the water. So it is safe. It just, they recommend if you're in a sensitive subgroup or have, you know, health conditions that you're immunocompromised, they recommend you don't drink the water if it's over twenty parts-per-trillion. That's, you know, there's really, so you can buy bottled water, just verify that is, it is tested for PFAS. There, there are, it's on the MassDEP website, which ones are tested. There are many that are not, so you just don't want to buy other bottled water that may have PFAS in it because it's talking health. The other thing is, our water system has, is comprised of seven wells that pump all the water into one distribution system. And our, most of our wells are okay, but we can't guarantee what water you're getting on any given day. They all pump at different times, and it's blended, but, you know, overall, we can't say that, yes, you're drinking this parts-per-trillion versus this parts-per-trillion at a different location. So again, this is a lifetime standard. You have many sources of PFAS that we, you know, are subject to, I believe, twenty percent comes from drinking water is what the estimate was. The other eighty percent are from other sources. So again, it's good to be alarmed and be, be informed of what's going on, but again, the water is safe for the health, the lifetime drinking standard. Just if you're in the sensitive subgroup, they recommend, you know, we'll use the filling station we provide or bottled water that's been tested.
How has the filtration system that, the, the system like that's being installed, how has it been received in other communities that have gone this route?
For PFAS, unknown. I don't believe anyone's done this for PFAS.
Okay, just in terms of usage and actually like, yeah, I'm using this and.
Filling stations have been used for other purposes, for other violations where a town has interim measures, but I don't believe it's been used for PFAS. This will be the first time.
My last question is, how will folks be notified? Is it going to be just posted on social media or will it be mailers or what kind of outreach will be done?
Yep. So the outreach is, oh, sorry, go ahead Connor.
Yeah, about which component? Just the station?
The station's available, yeah, the sensitive population.
The, the mailer we sent to everyone noted that this would be up and running in, in hopefully a matter of weeks. And once it is, we'll put information online and social media, and that'll then get added to as part of this regulation. We don't know exactly what form it looks like yet, but we're required to do mailings every quarter. So people will, will be aware of that through that.
And I assume those mailings are unfunded mandates.
Correct. To be clear, none of this is funded. This is being paid by ratepayers in Eastern, as will be nearly ten million dollar plants, but we'll get to that later.
Mark, I saw you had another question or a comment?
Yeah, I do. I don't, I just wanted to be clear. I, I, I have spoken to the, to the DEP before, and I know that the they can't get behind the in-home filter program for understandable reasons, exactly as you outlined Connor, but they're, they're also saying that an NSF-approved filter is, is, will filter out PFAS, though they can't tell you exactly how much it will filter out because they don't know if you have seventy-five parts-per-trillion and it'll reduce it to zero, but they are effective. So if you're, if you're at home and you, you know, you don't fall into that subcategory where you get the water for free from the town, and you don't want to buy bottled water, an NSF-approved filter, and there's very specific, there's very few, will reduce PFAS, and some of the testing on some of these filters tests, you know, up to like seventy parts-per-trillion and can reduce it to zero. You have to really get into it, but they don't say, don't, don't filter your water. That is still an option for people.
Sure. Yeah, and, and that's a good point. And in general, all of this, and the DEP will tell you this if you speak with them. These new standards are exactly that. They are brand new. They are some of the more strict standards in America. And there is no red lines of, you know, when, if you drink it for fifty years at this rate of glasses per year, then you're fine. And if not, so a lot of this is, is, is out of an abundance of caution. You know, it, it, it's interpreting animal testing, limited information about human consumption. You know, what the DEP knows is that PFAS are associated with health, adverse health effects, and once these regs go into effect, they're in effect overnight. So a town like Eastern that has gotten twenty-one annual water quality awards from the DEP in the past twenty-eight years becomes a violator overnight. That's just the way it works. Will a filter reduce PFAS here? Probably, but from a regulatory standpoint, unless we can say definitely to comply with a reg, we, we can't, to Dave's point, advise people on that. So even if we were, felt ninety-five percent comfortable, you know, it needs to be one hundred percent. So that's why we are going this kind of abundance of caution route.
So Connor, just tell us a little bit about what the state is asking you to do now as a reward for.
I gotta jump off if, I think Connor has the subject matter down pat, so we're going to talk about in a second, so.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
The contractor, contingent award or are we good?
Contingent award, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Sure, Dottie. So I haven't received an official appointment letter, but I've been asked by the MMA to be the municipal representative on a forthcoming statewide interagency task force on PFAS in McCommonwealth that will be formed as a result of legislation filed on the state level. And, you know, that, that committee's job is by the end of the year to make a report as well as recommended legislation to the General Court of Massachusetts on getting our arms around and dealing with PFAS in a more comprehensive manner, not just through administrative agency rulemaking, but through legislation. So as Dave had mentioned, there are a variety of pathways through which we are all exposed to PFAS. It has been in consumer products since the nineteen fifties. So, you know, we've all been exposed to it and consuming it for many, many, many years. And while the DEP is able to, you know, regulate maybe one-fifth of exposure through the drinking water program that obviously doesn't get to the root of the issue. The town's been a leader, I think, in that regard, joining class action suits and things of that nature in advancing construction of these plants. But there, this, the, the goal of this committee is to look at this more comprehensively. So again, I am probably speaking out of school since I don't have an official appointment letter, but that, that seems to be what I will be doing this year. So.
So I'll, I'll just say for myself and my family, we did get the PFAS filter on our kitchen faucet, and that connects to our water that comes out of our refrigerator. And I'm very happy with that. I feel a lot better knowing that we have that. And, you know, trying to educate yourself on what PFAS is in the materials that are in your house. So, you know, I didn't go out and buy all new pots and pans, but I said, what is the pan that I use the most? And I replaced that with one. You can look them up online now, and it will tell you which ones are PFAS safe. You know, if you're going to be replacing things, just be aware of that and try to choose a PFAS safe product and, you know, replace things a little by little if you can. You know, the other thing that's going to be concerning is we're going to be getting rid of all these things through, through our trash, and they're going to end up somewhere. So they, there's a lot more that the EPA has to look at to figure out what they're going to do about this problem. So with that, if, this is going to be forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for twelve months of service, and it's funded from the Water Department Operational Budget.
Dottie, could I just ask, we've been moving so quick on this. We actually don't have our paperwork in order yet from a contractor. So if I could, I'd ask the board to take a contingent vote to award based on a contractor satisfying all contract summits to be reviewed by DPW.
Okay. So Craig, do you want to make the contingent, the vote for awarding the contract DPW twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen to Blue Drop LLC for PFAS, I can't pronounce the long version of it, contingent on the conditions that Connor just mentioned?
Go move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
And a roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Lawrence Cohen. He'll be moved into the presentation area.
Yes, are you able to hear and see me?
We can. It's nice to see you again. Welcome back.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here this evening. I realize these are challenging times, to say the least, for virtually everything that everybody is doing, and Parkinson's is exactly the same. I had a conversation just a few days ago with a contact at the Michael J. Fox Foundation in New York, and we're talking about the fact that fundraising becomes more challenging because in effect, COVID has become the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room with all of the other things competing for funds. So that is part of the challenge of what's going on now. It's set back the program that we have for coming to you and soliciting your declaration on this proclamation. So we apologize for being a little late in the game, but I, as always, appreciate the opportunity to appear before the board. From a personal standpoint, I have now had Parkinson's for slightly over nine years. For those of you not familiar with all the ins and outs, it is a progressive neurodegenerative disease. And so when I talk to people in official positions, I try to bring a sense of urgency by saying, when I say it's a progressive disease, it means five minutes from now, I'm going to be different than I am right now. And I am keenly aware of that all of the time. So with that being said, here in Massachusetts, what I'm told is that there are twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-five people, residents, who have Parkinson's disease. Just to give you a little background, it is a disease that was first identified back in eighteen seventeen by James Parkinson, at the time known as the Shaking Palsy. It is most notably a disease where there are motor control issues. But one of the things that interests me of recent is that there's a lot of research being done on non-motor control aspects of Parkinson's. In fact, one of those involves COVID, because it turns out one of the symptoms of COVID is a loss of the ability to smell things, which is also something that Parkinson's disease is noted for. And in both cases, that proves to be a transient condition that returns, which is very rare. So the question now has been put before the research community. Is there a strange link between COVID and Parkinson's? And are there things that we can learn by studying COVID that will have implications for Parkinson's? And there was a twenty-page paper that appeared in the British Journal, the Lancet, back in November. This is an area that has a lot of people scratching their heads. As does another area, and I will try to keep this brief, that relates to the so-called microbiome. It turns out there are a number of people who believe that this neurological or brain disease actually starts in the gut. And there is a major nerve that goes from the gut to the brain, which almost serves as a highway for conducting certain substances from the gut to the brain, which in studies have been found to induce Parkinson's in laboratory animals. The point being that there is new and interesting stuff going on. Unfortunately, it's not going on fast enough to satisfy people like me because we have this ticking clock. But one of the things I like to do at this time of the year is make people aware of this. We are interested in people who are willing to participate in. We are interested in people who are willing to participate in research. We always have clinical trials going on. And we need both controls for the placebo, as well as people who have the disease, for testing particular drugs. So that is one item of interest, and the other, not surprisingly, is this thing called money. It turns out that, yes, indeed, there is a link between money and resolution of diseases. And boy, nothing can prove that better than the miraculous job that's been done by scientists around the world over the last year. I'm hoping when part, when COVID is behind us, that we will all walk away saying, we can do anything we want. We just need commitment, financial and otherwise. So again, I appreciate your willingness to give me some time this evening. It is always useful to talk to people about the disease. There are about one million of us in the U S who have it. And typically, there are a whole range of symptoms. So that, as a result, when Michael J. Fox is asked to define a Parkinson's patient, he says, there is no such thing, because if you meet one Parkinson's patient, you've met one Parkinson's patient. Meaning we all exhibit differently in our symptoms. And I have to say that, speaking for myself, I am very grateful that after nine years, I'm still able to string two words together and form a cogent sentence. There are people who are far less fortunate. And the work that I do with the Fox Foundation is directed at hopefully helping them just as soon as possible. So anybody in the community who might have the disease, know if somebody who has the disease has questions about it, I always offer myself up as a resource that they can call upon.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being back. What we traditionally have done is we'll read the declaration for Parkinson's Awareness Month, and we'll all sign that, and we'll send, you'll be mailed a copy of the signed version of the proclamation. So Craig, do you have that handy?
I certainly do. I certainly do. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. This is Parkinson's Awareness Month Proclamation two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease, and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas there is a indicate inadequate data on the incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but is estimated to affect nearly one million people in the United States, and that number is expected to more than double by two thousand and forty. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the fifteenth leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas there are millions of Americans who are caregivers, family members, and friends greatly impacted by Parkinson's disease. And whereas it is estimated that the annual economic burden of Parkinson's disease is over fifty-two billion dollars per year, of which the federal government shoulders twenty-five-point-four billion in indirect cost to patients and families totaling twenty-six-point-five billion. And whereas it is estimated that more than one-point-six million people in the United States will be impacted by Parkinson's disease by two thousand and thirty-seven, at an estimated economic burden of seventy-nine billion dollars. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause in most individuals is still unknown. And whereas there currently is no objective diagnostic test or biomarker to diagnose Parkinson's disease, and whereas there is no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease, and available treatments are limited in their ability to address patients' medical needs and remain effective over time. Whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, gait and balance difficulty, speech and swallowing disturbances, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care for those living with the disease today. There, now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby proclaim April as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the Town of Easton, given under our hand and seal the town this twenty-sixth day of April in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-one.
So we really appreciate you being here, and we thank you for your tireless advocacy of people with Parkinson's. I know that this is a lot of work for you, and you're passionate about it, and it comes through when you talk to us. So we hope to see you again next year at this time, and wish you continued good health.
Well, thank you so much for the support for the proclamation. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is the Common Victualer License Transfer. Eva Faltos, Doing Business as Slice of Greek, to Sammy Faris. I apologize if I've mispronounced those incorrectly. Doing Business as Slice of Greek, one-eleven Belmont Street, Easton, Mass. We do have an application for the transfer of the Common Victualer License, and it's been reviewed by town departments. And Sammy is here?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
So this is your opportunity to tell us a little bit about Slice of Greek. Where are you located, and what type of, can you elaborate on anything about your business? What type of food you serve, and what are the fan favorites?
Actually, I like, I like to work in Southeastern here, and I worked for Bita Place like almost twelve years. And I'm gonna try to do better business. And I try to do my best too, and I have a lot of, like, I'm trying to do a lot of good food. And I try to be like, everything is clean, everything is gonna be healthy.
Well, thank you. Any questions from anyone on the board or comments? Okay, so the recommendation is that the board consider the following conditions for approval. The applicant must satisfy a pre-opening inspection requirements and obtain a new food service permit with the Board of Health prior to opening. All outstanding excise taxes must be paid in full prior to opening. And that is all I have there. You'll be getting a a letter that will outline the details of that. And we, we really wish you good luck with your, your restaurant and, and taking over that license.
Thank you so much.
With that, if somebody would like to make a motion to, to approve the transfer of the Common Victualer License from Eva Faltos, Doing Business as Slice of Greek, to Sammy Faris, Doing Business as Slice of Greek.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
So that's a roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. So congratulations and and best wishes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, and next we have the Annual Junk Dealer License Renewals. We have Emporium of Retro and Interesting Collectibles at four forty-seven Turnpike Street, Easton, South Shore Gold at five fifty-nine Foundry Street, Easton, and J D Enterprise at ten Wallace Drive, also in Easton. We have applications for all of them. They've been circulated to various town departments, and there is no objection to the annual renewals. So if, Michael, did you have anything that you wanted to add or a comment on that?
Just to add for the benefit of the new board members, I always think junk dealer is such a tough word. So what a junk dealer is, is anyone that that sells or purchases junk, but that includes old and precious metals, secondhand articles. So typically, when you think of maybe like a pawn shop, none of these are a typical pawn shop, but that sort of business or collectibles, old video games, baseball cards, things like that. There are certain restrictions and requirements that are outlined in the bylaw for these licenses. Two of the biggest ones, for example, is no one under age eighteen can sell any goods. And for any items valued over five hundred dollars, the business must keep certain records. They have to take a photocopy of the seller's photo I D. They have to hold items for at least twenty-one days. So there are certain restrictions in place. But again, all three of these are currently doing business. Two of them are by appointment only. One is actually, there's only one actual storefront, which is the Emporium. And again, we'd recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Michael, none of them have any violations. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to award the Annual Junk Dealer License Renewals to Emporium of Retro and Interesting Collectibles, South Shore Gold, and J D Enterprise?
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
And roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. All right, for action and discussion, item number six, the discussion and vote for the board reorganization. This is the first meeting after the annual town election. So in doing so, every year, the board elects the chair and the vice chair of the Select Board.
I am pleased to put forward Dottie Full Janetti as chair of the Select Board for this current year.
I'm in support of that as well.
Okay, great. So you guys aren't ready to fire me yet. That's good. I'm on probation. So we have a motion and a second, and a roll call vote.
Barger, Full Janetti.
Lamb, Full Janetti.
Devens, Full Janetti.
Stacy, Full Janetti.
And Full Janetti, Full Janetti. Terrific. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I think Craig has done an outstanding job this past year. And so I just think this is a great year to continue things as they are. We need some stability with some changes and difficulties that town's facing, so I'll nominate Craig.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
So that's Lamb and Devens, and a roll call vote on that as well, Craig?
Barger, Barger.
Lamb, Barger.
Devens, Barger.
Stacy, Barger.
And Full Janetti, Barger. Terrific. One of the things that we would typically do after, for the first meeting, is to look at the boards and the committees that the Select Board representatives participate in. We have moved that to the next agenda because we wanted to give you more than fifteen minutes to think about that since the election was just on Saturday. So, you know, we, one of the things that I think is important amongst us as board members is to really see what people's passion and strengths are, and really let, let the person who wants to handle tho- those areas really shine on that. So Mark has done an incredible job with economic development. Craig really cares about policy issues. I really care about housing and economic development also. Tom was really great at finance. Chuck was like a CPA, and he cared about finance and veteran services and the age-friendly movement. Tom had a healthcare background. So we really want you to take a little bit of time to think about where you'd like to make an impact. And then when we come back next week, we'll look, or at the next meeting, we'll look at who would like to serve on the different boards and committees. So keep that in mind.
Dottie, is there somewhere we can review what those opportunities are in kind of a one pack?
We'll get, we'll get a list out to you, and that'll also be in the next packet.
Great, thank you.
You can also ask Mark or myself about any, about the committees too. We have some, we have some expertise on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, the next up is a road closure request for Oliver Ames High School graduation ceremony, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, with a rain date of Sunday, August second, two thousand and twenty-one, at ten A M. And I believe Principal Wes Paul is gonna be joining us for this.
Hi, sorry, as you introduced me, my screen just said that you were gonna go into shutdown mode, because I, so. So I didn't hear what you said after I was up next.
Well, thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate having you here tonight. And we just wanted you to talk a little bit about, we have the road closure request for the graduation ceremony. I'll read off the details on that, but I just wanted to see if you wanted to talk about anything. I know that the past couple of years have been challenging with COVID and how you're able to still try to offer these exciting things for our seniors. And if you wanted to just talk a little bit about what you have lined up this year.
Sure, like last year, the restrictions that we're under has created a great deal of discussion amongst principals in the state as to how to handle graduation. Last year, I was fairly adamant that I wanted to do a live event. And a lot of communities did drive-by, you know, rolling parades. That we had a parade as well, but they did rolling parades where they handed out diplomas, one car at a time. We managed to put a program together with the Board of Health's approval and the school committee's approval that allowed us to do social distancing, limiting the number of people in attendance with two tickets per graduate, livestreamed on Eastern Cable Access, and had the, because it was August last year, it was very hot. We had the emergency response team in town that was there to provide support should anyone feel faint from the heat. Fortunately, they really weren't called into attention except for one unrelated issue. It was good to have them there. But last year's model went very well. We graduated close to three hundred students in about an hour. And we're looking to do the exact same thing this year on June fifth, which is a Saturday. We don't, we can't have it at Frothingham Park because of the, which is a beautiful park to have it at. It just doesn't lend itself to the type of setting that we can create with social distancing and sightlines for parents. So it was one of those things that created an opportunity for us to use the, the field at the high school last year. And that's what we're looking to do this year. The, the reason for my letter to you is to look at the possibility of closing some roads for the period of time during graduation. The reason for that is graduation has been traditionally a town of Easton, almost like an open fair. And lots of people who don't have any interest, or, excuse me, anybody actually graduating love the ceremony because it's an hour long, and they will walk by down to the park and observe it. So we tried to put some restrictions in to prevent crowding and preventing people from gathering on the campus just to try to get a glimpse of what was taking place. So the road closure would be from, basically Lothrup Street from Sheridan to Randall, and kind of block off the access road behind the middle school in R O. And we have a number of police officers that I've asked Chief Sullivan for. I believe I got a notice that I should also reach out to Chief Partridge to request a firefighter, paramedic for that day as well, if this is approved. And so I will do that tomorrow pending the approval of the Board of Select.
Okay, so technically, the road closure would be from nine A M. to twelve P M. For Lothrup Street, from Randolph, Randall Street to Sheridan Street, and the access road behind the middle school. The police department, the police and the Department of Public Works have been notified and have no concerns. Fire Chief Partridge has requested that the school department contact the fire department to schedule two firefighters slash emergency medical technicians for the road closure as a contingency for Select Board approval. So I, we will take the vote, but then I'd ask you to just hang on a second, Wes. If anyone has, anyone have any comments or questions? So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the road closure requests for the graduation ceremony, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, with a rain date of Sunday, August second, two thousand and twenty-one, at ten A M.
Can I interrupt?
So moved, Barger.
Sure.
The dates that you might have on your letter, the way you read it, I believe, are incorrect. You have it, it's our letter that made the mistake. I apologize. But it's June fifth and June sixth, Saturday, June fifth, and Sunday, June sixth. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I think what happened is when we pulled the letter from last year, we put the date at the top of the letter as graduation was taking place on June fifth, but down below, the date for the graduation wasn't changed to the, to the fifth. I apologize.
Sure, no problem. So that, to clarify, the dates are June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, with a rain. Sure, no problem. So that, to clarify, the dates are June fifth, twenty twenty-one, with a rain date of Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty-one, both at ten A M.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig?
Barger, yes?
Lamb, yes?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So I do confess, Wes, we don't typically have you come in to talk about things like this. We usually vote it, but I did want you to come in for two reasons. One, because of the significance of the changes that have happened. I wanted you to be able to talk about the opportunities for the seniors, but also to congratulate you on your retirement. And thank you for all of your work over the years. Both my kids have gone through the high school and, you know, we really appreciated everything that you've done as a community. And I would say personally, the work that you've done to support Eastern Wings of Hope, the Substance Use Coalition, has been really tremendous. I've worked on that committee since it started, and I know that you have done, made a real personal and professional commitment to supporting that work. And the care and compassion that you show for your students is, is really incredible. So I just really wanna thank you.
I appreciate that. Very kind of you. It's, it's been an honor to serve in the town of Easton. And the families and the students that I've had the opportunity to, to work with have been outstanding. So it has made the twenty-two years go by very quickly. I apologize for the noise. This meeting was supposed to, in my mind, was earlier, and my family just arrived, and my dogs are very excited to see my wife and daughter. So if you hear dogs on the hardwood floor, that's what's going on.
I think we all know that sound. Any other board members have any comments that they'd like to share?
I was just. I was just curious how many times Mark ended up in the principal's office.
Well, you know, that's, that's actually a funny point, because I graduated from Oliver Ames in nineteen ninety-nine. And Mr. Paul, I believe, I can't call you Wes, I believe you started in like May that year. So I, I had, I graduated with Duncan Oliver, but I remember vividly when you came in to fill some big shoes. And you did, outstanding. And we had some events that year that were really hard, you know, when you first entered in. And I remember even being a kid, eighteen years old, and it was really hard, it was really hard when you started. And I remember as the class of ninety-nine, all of us watching how you handled that situation. And even with, with that eighteen-year-old mind saying, wow, this guy has class and grace. So everything I've heard from the community has echoed that. I saw it with my own eyes as an eighteen-year-old kid. And congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Mark. And I do remember the class of ninety-nine very well. I started April first, April Fool's Day. I remember telling Bill Simmons that when he said you can start April first, I said, that's April Fool's Day, and he didn't think it was funny. Start April Fool's Day. And then a lot of events transpired over the course of a few weeks. But I, I, I did have a really good relationship with Duncan and encouraged him to, he actually wasn't planning on doing graduation.
I know, I remember that well. I thought that was such a classy move, what you did.
Yeah, so I, I, I basically threatened him. No, I I encouraged him to come back and help me out, because I think it would mean a lot to the seniors.
Yeah, it did. It meant a lot, and it still does today.
That's good. Well, thank you, Mark.
On a funny note, I was actually a Stoughton High student during the years. You were the assistant principal in Stoughton. So everything kind of comes full circle in a really amazing way.
I was in Stoughton for four good years, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I graduated in ninety-nine, so the exact years. So yeah, you overlapped. But congratulations.
I appreciate that. It truly has been a wonderful journey for, for me, my family. I, all three of my daughters graduated from O A and went through the school system. So it's been a wonderful time of connecting with the community. So thank you for your appreciation. It means a lot.
Thank you.
Greg, did you have any comments? No, Jamie?
No, just, just thank you. I'm just sad that my three kids are not going to get to experience the high school under your stewardship, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, you've certainly made your mark. Connor?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say thanks and congratulations on a well-end retirement.
Thank you very much, Connor.
All right. Well, thank you for being here with us. Get back to your family, and we'll see you at graduation.
All right, take care.
Bye. Okay. Number nine, we have an acceptance of a resignation from Michelle McGee from the Cultural Council effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Her term expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So she had sent in resignation to the town clerk, and we'll be advertising that vacancy, which has a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So if somebody would like to make a motion to accept that resignation, and that will also be a roll call vote. Craig, you're on mute.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
And the roll call vote?
Barger McGee?
Lamb McGee?
Stevens McGee?
Stacy McGee?
And Full Genetti McGee. And we thank Michelle for her work on the Cultural Council, Council. The next, we have an acceptance of resignation, John Thomas, the Conservation Commission, effective April fifth, twenty twenty-one. And that term of that position was expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We did get his resignation, and we're advertising that vacancy, which has a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So if somebody would like to make the motion, and then we'll do the roll call vote.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb?
Barger Thomas?
Lamb Thomas?
Stevens Thomas.
Stacy Thomas.
And Full Genetti Thomas. And we thank John for his time served on the Conservation Commission. Next, we have a vote to appoint Michelle McGee to the Board of Registars. She has been nominated by the Democratic Committee Representative, who happens to be Craig, with a term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So.
All right, I believe Michelle is here.
Okay, great.
Evening.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi there.
Thanks for being.
Michelle.
Hey, Craig.
So thank you for, for your interest in being on the Board of Registars. Craig, did you have any questions or comments that you?
No, I just, I just wanted the people to know that, that, that the reason Michelle left the Cultural Council is because by, by law, she had to in order to be considered for the, the registrar's position. And, and we're, as the Democratic Town Committee was very pleased to nominate Michelle for, for this position. We wanted to thank Ben Carroll, who was in the position for a number of years. And Michelle is stepping into, to that role.
Terrific. What does the Board of Registars do?
I think that's for you, Michelle.
That's for me. So I had a nice discussion with Danielle, and she had helped me navigate it, as well as I spoke with Ben Carroll a couple of times. So I will be stepping into the role for the registrar for the town. So I was told that I will be, there'll be several days during the year that I will be, need to be at the town hall. And we will register people. I also spoke to her about possibly, I don't think Wes is still on anymore, but possibly doing some registering at the high school. She was interested in maybe reaching out in that particular way. And, and I'm happy to be able to do it. Thank you. I've really enjoyed the Cultural Council. I was disappointed that I couldn't. But it is, it is clear. Danielle did look into it a second time, so.
Well, we appreciate it, and we know you've been a great volunteer in the community, so we look forward to you serving in this capacity. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to appoint Michelle to the Board of Registars?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
And a roll call vote?
Barger McGee?
Lamb McGee?
Stevens McGee?
Stacy McGee?
And Full Genetti McGee. So congratulations, and thank you for serving, and that appointment ends March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so you have, you have to stay around for a while.
I will do that, I promise. Thank you so much. And on a little side note, let me say that way back, Jennifer, when you were at Stoughton High, I worked for Wes as the hall monitor. He was the assistant principal at Stoughton High, and I will tell you that back in ninety-nine, that basically meant busting kids for smoking, so.
So funny. He probably wouldn't remember me from those years. I was pretty straight-laced. My brothers, though, on the other hand. They were a little wild. I was the straight-laced one.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the discussion and vote nominations of the Inspector of Animals, Jordan Holbrook and Leanne Meal as the alternate inspector. We have a memo in our packet from Kristin Kennedy, the Director of Health and Community Services, requesting the nomination of Jordan Holbrook and Leanne Meal to serve as the Animal Inspectors for the Department of Agricultural Resources Division of Animal Health. Ms. Holbrook serves the town in this capacity as part of her job as the town's animal control officer, and Ms. Meal serves as the alternate animal control officer. This term expires for the appointment in April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So Jordan is connecting now as we speak. Hi, Jordan. You're on mute.
Still on mute, Jordan. There you go.
Now? Sorry, thank you.
We haven't seen you in a while, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to come in so that the public could see you, learn a little bit of what this position is. And also to thank you for the great work that you do as the animal control officer. I can hear some, some of your background.
Sorry.
So, so do you want to just tell us a little bit about what the, the animal inspectors do?
So as an animal inspector, I do yearly barn inspections, so I go around to all the farms and check out any livestock they have, as well as delivering quarantines to any dog bites and investigating that as well.
Terrific. Well, how long, you've been here for a couple of years now. I remember when you first started, so. You're.
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, your, wow, time's flying.
Yeah, it is.
And I see that when, you know, on social media, when someone loses a dog, or finds a dog, or you're called into a lot of different helpful situations, and from what it seems to me, you handle those with a lot of care and compassion for the families and the animals. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. I do love my job.
Great, great. So if somebody would like to make the nomination for Jordan Holbrook and to serve as the animal inspector and do we need two different motions, Connor, or can we do them both?
I would recommend two, just because it's for two separate positions. And so one would be a nomination of Jordan for the animal inspector and Leanne Meal as the alternate inspector, please.
Okay, Craig?
Do I move to appoint Jordan Holbrook as the animal inspector?
Sorry, I, I will get in trouble with like four department heads if we say appoint. It's technically a nomination.
Sorry. I move to nominate Jordan Holbrook as the, as the animal inspector.
Second, Lamb.
And is that a roll call vote, Connor, for the nomination? Okay, Craig?
Barger Holbrook?
Lamb Holbrook?
Evans Holbrook?
Stacy Holbrook?
And Full Genetti Holbrook. Sorry about that, Craig. I think I was using that word first, so. And then if you'd like to make the nomination of Leanne Meal to also serve as the assistant animal inspector.
I will nominate, nominate Leanne Meal as the alternate inspector.
Second, Lamb.
So back to you, Craig?
Barger Meal?
Lamb Meal?
Stevens Meal?
Stacy Meal?
And Full Genetti Meal. And those terms are both expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So thank you so much for being here with us tonight, Jordan. It was good to see you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Jordan.
Hi.
Craig, you just became vice chair for a whole, full year, and already.
So next, we have the discussion and vote for nomination to the town's representative to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. And we received a memo from Nicole Long, the C E O of Old Colony Elder Services, requesting the select board nominate the town's representative to Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. Prior to May thirty-first, the Director of Health and Community Services, Kristin Kennedy and Connor both recommend and request that the board vote to nominate Ann Daly, the Deputy Director of Health and Community Service. The term for this expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and Ann currently serves in this role. So if somebody would like to make that nomination?
One quick question, two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, Dottie?
The, it should be twenty twenty-two, right, Connor?
Yes, it's just a typo on my part. I apologize. Yes, so it would be a nomination for Ann Daly to be the town's representative to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Roll call vote, Craig?
Barger Daly?
Lamb Daly?
Evans Daly?
Stacy Daly?
And Full Genetti Daly. Thanks for catching that, Craig. You've redeemed yourself. Next is, so the next item is discussion regarding the reaffirmation of the select board's statements of ethics and values. So following every election, the board reviews and reaffirms the statements of ethics and values, which are in our packet. And last year, when this happened, it was right after the, the murder of George Floyd. And there was a lot going on, a lot of conversation, a lot of protests, a lot of passion and a lot of interest. And I held off on the board actually making that statement at the time, because I wanted to take the time to review it. And with everything going on, it just, the timing wasn't right on that. And so before we just go through and do that reaffirmation, I wanted the board to take a look at it, and we, we'll bring it up again at the next meeting. But I'd like to really make it a little bit more meaningful. And I don't know, I'd love feedback from the public. I would like the Human Rights Committee, Raising Multicultural Kids, to take a look at it. And I don't want to just check the box that we, we did something about this, like other committees are. I want to make it more meaningful. So I brought it to this agenda so that we could just think about it, so that the public could see what we have. And if you would take a look at it before the next meeting and send me directly any comments or questions that you have on that, I'll take that information and try to draft something that we can review at the next meeting. But I think it's important that the community does know that they do look at this and that they know it's intentional in the way that we do serve and work with each other and work with our fellow boards and committees and the way we work with our neighbors in the community. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts on that?
I think it's a great suggestion. I'd be happy to bring it to the Human Rights Committee at their, at the first meeting in, in, in May as well. And I think that I've always enjoyed reading this for the last three years. So I, I look forward to the opportunity to, to, to review it and maybe improve it and read it again, or maybe I'll let Mark read it again.
You know, I, I like this approach. I think it's, it's treating it as a, as a living, breathing document, which is, and that's exactly what it is. You know, times are changing, things change, and I like this approach, so I'm down for it.
Great. Jamie or Jen, any comments, questions?
I'll just say when the eighty-six pages was dropped on me last night, this is one thing that did stand out, and I enjoyed seeing the focus and attention it was being given, so thank you.
Terrific.
I agree. I reviewed it during the process of election, and I really, it, it really struck a chord in a beautiful way. I think it's a really nice way to communicate the values and the mindset of the group coming into discussion. And I think it shows in the civil discourse and, and whatnot. That's been displayed by the group for so long.
Great. Well, I think it's important for, for the people in the community to know that these issues are important to our board, and I really want to be thoughtful about that. So i- if people at home are watching this or hear about this and they have thoughts or ideas, please email the select board, selectboard@easton MA dot U S, and we'll take all of that into consideration, and then we'll take this up at our next meeting. Next, we have the town administrator's presentation of the final fiscal year twenty twenty-two operating and capital budget.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So let me pull up the presentation here. So over the weekend, in addition to your packet, the preliminary or the final budget and the first cut of the budget book was emailed to the board. That was provided to the Finance Committee. was emailed to the board, that was provided to the Finance Committee this morning as well, where it will be reviewed again Wednesday night, and I am happy to present the balanced budget to the board. Is that viewing all right for everyone? Everyone can see it well?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me just get myself in order here. I will try to cover everything without keeping you here until 1:00 AM. So, we'll get right to it. So, in this presentation, this year, so last year, we didn't do the budget book because of COVID. Frankly, there was just too much going on. There was too much that was in flux and changing, and we just did not have the resources to do it. The prior year fiscal '20, we actually won the National, the Government Finance Officers of America Distinguished Budget Award for the budget book, for its transparency, its comprehensiveness, and so we're bringing it back. It'll be reissued again this year in largely the same format, but we did make some changes to the approach, including trying to be a little bit more self-aware of just the length, right? I mean, our budget documents used to be a four-page summary spreadsheet, and you call it a day, and I think the budget book that won that award was between, I think, 250 and 400 pages. And it's all important information. The public deserves to know it, but people have more going on now than ever, and so we wanted to try to be more comprehensive in the budget message and touch on not just the operating budget, but the capital budget. You know, it kind of dawned on me recently that when we make the budget presentation, we talk almost exclusively about the operations, which is where, you know, the day-to-day services a lot of people interact with, and that makes sense, but capital obviously has a ton going on, and particularly this year, and so this presentation will kind of cover both. And the executive summary, you know, pages seven to 10 of that budget document you sent is really what informs this presentation and really covers everything. The goal there was if you read those four pages, you have a pretty good understanding of what's in the next 200. So, first, we'll touch on operations tonight, and then I'll do a quick overview of the capital budget, and then I am happy to take any questions the board has. So, fiscal '22 will be the first year of recovery and reinvestment for the town of Easton and awake of the COVID-19 pandemic, which we are aware to stabilize every aspect of life, including more routine matters like municipal budgeting. After a year marked by historic economic contractions, job losses, and all sorts of difficulties, current economic forecasts for the current calendar year and next are effectively the complete opposite of what we were looking at a year ago in the pre-vaccine paradigm. The United States has one of the world's leading vaccine campaigns. There has been massive multi-trillion-dollar federal stimulus signed into law this year in addition to four trillion of federal COVID response last year, and state-level economic reopenings are showing promising signs of economic recovery across the nation. Those are all obviously much better indicators than where we were a year ago. That said, we still remain cautious in our revenue assumptions for more economically impacted receipts next year, such as local receipts and state aid with the majority of our revenue growth next year coming from taxation, as is typical. Operating budgets represent level services with limited exceptions, with some key investments and restorations, building off of pretty severe cuts last year. Reserves are tapped in a very responsible manner this year to offset the longstanding structural revenue deficit that we had before COVID, and that will continue with us after COVID. So in total, the net result is a $92,916,000 operating budget, including enterprise funds. It's an increase of about 3.2 million over last year, which is 3.59%. So, normally, when we talk about a budget, we get into revenue right out of the gate and really kind of get into micro-level detail on all the different nuances and different chapters of funding, and I didn't want to do that this year, because frankly, I've been doing it for five years almost, and I felt it was a better way to start to talk about what we're actually investing in and the good things that this budget will do. So, following last year's budget, which was draconian and regressive by any standard, more than 26 full-time equivalent positions were eliminated across the town and school departments. Fiscal '22 operating budget makes some targeted restorations and investments to address critical service needs for the community across a pretty broad range of our departments. And so, you see here represented what we're talking about is roughly two FTEs on the town side and three in the net for the schools, a pretty modest department to last year. We're looking at a 2% and a 3% increase respectively. So, a summary of the kind of key investments and restorations that we will be looking at on the town side. We have program funding for a stipend for an assignment of an Easton firefighter/paramedic to a new shared administrative role between the Department of Health and Community Service and the Fire Department. The chief and director are both very excited about, as am I. Obviously, the Fire Department and Health Department have never worked more closely together than in the past year due to COVID, and something that Chief Partridge and Director Kennedy, actually before the pandemic, to their credit, put on the town's radar as a long-term funding goal would be a shared position that focuses on aligning proactive public health programming on the Board of Health side of house with emergency medical response and community medicine on the fire side of house. In many conversations, that's referred to as community paramedicine, and that is where people much smarter than me about EMS say that that industry is going, and so we are very excited that that will be funded in this budget. Additionally, we will be making the investment in a civil engineer shared between the DPW administration and water departments. DPW is busier than ever. They are nearly doubling their capital project management in the next three-year window, and that's if you do not count any assistance whatsoever for the Blanche James Elementary School project. That is half-funded out of a general fund, half-funded out of enterprise. There will also be a water treatment plant operator position funded entirely out of enterprise for water. As in the next two years, we will go from zero water plants to four. Another area of investment for the town is adding a halftime position to the town clerk's office. This will formalize the existing work that's performed typically by election and poll workers to help support that office, which is also busier than ever with new expectations placed upon them for expanded voter access, vote by mail, early voting, absentee voting that we anticipate will become the norm, and we want to make sure that we're appropriately investing in those areas so that voters have full access to exercise their rights. And finally, there will be some partial restorations, although not complete, to other various cuts that we made. So, we made cuts across many, many departments last year, including assessing and collections. We tried to make it work with a shared position, and there is just too much work. It's not operable, so we will be restoring halftime positions in each of those departments. So those are a sampling of some town investments we're looking at. For the schools, the fiscal '22 budget includes important reactive investments to partially reinstate some of the positions that were eliminated in fiscal '21. They address English language learner populations and special education, as well as physical and social emotional needs of students. In addition to that, there will be interventionists funded temporarily through federal relief in an effort to assess and remediate learning gaps for all students in the district that may have grown out of the pandemic and disruptions to education. There's some consolidations of positions, and so the net there is three FTE for the schools. I think something that the schools have long been targeting, and I'm super excited to see and very proud of, is they will be beginning this year funding incrementally reductions in kindergarten tuition costs. It will, there will still be tuition for kindergarten next year, but the goal is to sustainably start working away at that through a buildup in the school budget, not unlike what the town did with snow and ice in response to worsening weather over time to eventually eliminate kindergarten tuitions. That obviously greatly increases the equity of educational access to all families in Easton, which is huge. And EPS data indicates, you know, as do lots and lots of studies, that having fuller access to full daycare for young learners provides a critical foundation for their numeracy and their literacy for the rest of their life. So, really excited about that, and I give credit to the superintendent school committee there. So in total, schools are looking at 3.01%. And then, finally, some other areas of investment that are not necessarily as directly obvious as positions are some key fiscal decisions that we're making for the first time ever because we were able to, or were fortunate that the health insurance budget was affordable this year. Some of the savings there compared to what we projected, we will be programming for the first time ever, although small, a recurring annual contribution to the town's OPEB trust fund. So, OPEB is other post-employment benefits. It is a financial liability shared by all municipalities, and it's something that we need to be contributing to on a regular basis. We have had a strategy of basically contributing when there was excess free cash. This board is very well aware that there are a million things fighting for those free cash dollars, so we felt that with a little bit of breathing room this year, that it was the right thing to do to put a small commitment into the operating budget, but hopefully we can keep moving forward. It's the right thing to do, and it's also viewed very favorably by bond rating agencies. Another investment that straddles operating and capital is that the exempt debt service in this budget will increase by one and a quarter million dollars to support the ongoing bond issuance for the Blanche James Elementary School, which has now broken ground, which is super exciting. So, that sounds like a lot. But it's important to keep in mind where we're building back from, which was one of the most regressive budgets we've had in decades. So, the net is still far fewer staff than where we were, but it's still, is certainly a positive move in the right direction. So, these investments are made possible from a combination of factors. First and foremost is the baseline we're working off of is artificially depressed. The fiscal '21 town budget was actually lower than fiscal '20, and the school budget barely grew. It was less than 1%. So that obviously makes incremental increases of 2% and 3% much more feasible. Another thing that's making this possible is the good partnership we have with our labor unions. All town unions except one, and all school unions have agreed to a one-year extension of their current contracts at a 1% rate. That provides, makes it a lot easier to plan wages, and it's affordable. So, we appreciate tremendously those unions working with us here. Another thing that's making this possible is quite significant savings from SEMRECs. So, our regional dispatch went live in December. Fiscal '20 operations plus soft costs, dispatch costs roughly $750,000 to Easton. In fiscal '22, it will cost 300. So that pays for more, every, every investment I listed for the town government is more than paid for without one action, which is great. So a lot of credit to police, fire, and their leadership for helping us get there. Another area that can't go without, no, is that our department heads have just really done an exceptional job managing their budgets in the long term, particularly through COVID. Finally, an area that makes this possible is that the town, with this board, finance committee, school committee, voters, the department heads, has deliberately built our reserve position for many, many, many years, doubling it between 2017 and '20, thankfully, right before COVID. So that put us in a position where we can start to responsibly plan some of these investments. Here's a table just capping the expense summary. So fixed costs, you're looking at sections one through five here. You have debt service, employee benefits, educational assessments, things of that nature. These are costs we don't have a tremendous amount of control over year to year. You see debt service, again, you know, 35%, that looks pretty eye-popping, and you have to take a step back and contextualize that one and a quarter million out of one and a half is that exempt debt approved by voters for the override for the school building. The remainder of that is funding, permanent financing for previously authorized capital. Revenue, critically, that one and a quarter million of that school debt is offset entirely by an increase to the levy and the tax levy to pay for it. Benefits and insurance, 4.48% for that account is not bad. And health insurance is where it was in the threes. Our pension assessment is in the fives, but that is still better. We were looking at 8% in the past, so that's an improvement. That also carries the small annual contribution to OPEB. Educational assessments, this is for Southeastern Regional and Bristol-Aggie. Southeastern Regional's assessment is the same as it was presented on April 5th and 7th. It is subsidized effectively by the federal ESER funds, making that quite manageable for this year. Bristol-Aggie's assessment's increasing significantly on a percentage basis because they have their own school building project that's now being financed, and communities pay a per-student share of that. Moving into section four, other, you see about a half-million dollar cut there. That's basically reflective of eliminating the half-million dollar transfer to the stabilization fund that we funded at the November town meeting. And then capital from taxation is eliminated. That was capital funding paid for out of the operating budget technically in the fall, when state revenue came in better than we had hoped. That was a one-time item, and so that's why that is coming out. The remainder, just gave a quick summary over. So we'll move into revenue. Revenue is projected to increase at the same rate, of course, balanced budget as expenses. So you're looking at revenue of just shy of 93 million, 3.59% increase. Nearly that entire increase in revenue is taxation and the exempt tax from the school project, while the other categories are projected a very modest increases, so state aid and local receipts or cuts, like our reserve use. This is unsurprising. It follows a decades-long trend wherein non-tax revenues simply don't grow at a sufficient rate each year to meet rising costs, and therefore necessarily, the town becomes more reliant on the tax levy. So, in fiscal '22, taxation will increase 5.53% or 3.3 million. If you go back, our total revenue growth is 3.2. So, our actual total revenue growth is less than the tax growth because of the cuts in our reserve reliance. Again, our tax levy will increase to 64.4 million. A large portion of that, one-third of that, is that exempt levy for the school building project that voters authorized in 2019. The remainder of it is the statutorily allowed 2.5% plus new growth. As time passes, our reliance on taxation as a percentage of our total revenue increases because of minimal increases to state aid, and that forces an increased reliance on taxation. So this is just a four-year window, and you see from roughly 72 to 74.5%, and this is just a trend that continues every year. Because that trending continues every year, new growth is critical. New growth is the taxable value of new or substantially improved property. It's the only way for the town to increase the tax levy more than 2.5% without an operational override. So recognizing stagnation of non-tax revenues such as state aid, the town spent the previous decade pretty significantly and aggressively investing in critical infrastructure, particularly sewer and zoning reform to increase new growth. And obviously, there is macroeconomic forces at play, but you could see in this graph that you're looking at the low point of fiscal 2009 and the Great Recession. Starting in 11 and 12, some of those major infrastructure projects began along with the broader economic recovery. And prior to COVID, fiscal '18, '19, and '20 were pretty close to record-setting new growth years, reaching levels that we had not seen before the 2008 financial collapse, which was, which was great. We were hitting roughly a million, which was really helpful. Unfortunately, COVID hit that. The actual new growth in '21 was just about 700,000, and we are kind of keeping our powder dry and being conservative, looking at 650 for new growth next year. You may ask, well, we hear about all the building permanent activity and things of this nature. How can that be? And that's, some of this is project-specific. You know, one of those years where we broke a million was Adlon, which was obviously an enormous investment, the size of which doesn't happen every year. But there's also continuing supply chain challenges, getting lumber is very difficult and things of that nature. So we don't want to count our eggs before they hatch, so we're going to remain conservative on our growth forecast for now. We're hopeful that growth will pick back up in the post-pandemic era. A lot of things that will impact that are outside the town's immediate control. That includes the speed and effectiveness of vaccine rollouts. The first draft of this presentation was made in February, and obviously, we're in a pretty different world now on that, which is exciting. The vaccine throughput is going quite well, as well as the impact, the, as of yet, not quantified impact of the recently passed American Rescue Plan, to see what those kind of macroeconomic factors do to Easton's growth. That'll take some time to see. Another revenue category, second largest, is state aid. It's projected a modest increase of 1.45% from fiscal '21 levels. Fiscal '21 was level funded at zero from fiscal '20. So, we are thrilled. It is not being cut, given the economic circumstances we all just went through, but, you know, that's pretty, 1.5% over two years is pretty stagnant, obviously. That brings us to just over 13 million. This revenue source historically was cut rather than level funded in the Great Recession started in fiscal eight. And it took until two thousand sixteen to recover to two thousand eight levels. We had a few years of one or two percent growth and then we hit COVID. So this account really has just taken a beating. Since two thousand and eight, and that's effectively why the reliance on taxation has increased. You look at the graph here. And it's effectively the opposite trend. Prior to the Great Recession, nearly twenty five percent of the town's revenue came from state aid. Next year it will be fifteen percent. That money has to be made up for somewhere and it's taxation. One of the main drivers of this situation is that Easton is considered a minimum aid community under the state education funding formula. And what that means is that based on a complex economic formula in the state education funding law. Money is allocated and when it looks at a town like Easton, based on per capita income and other factors, it it determines whether we agree with it or not is irrelevant. But the town through taxation could afford to pay more for education. And so we received the minimum allowed by law from the state every year, which is an additional thirty dollars per student. So that's roughly one hundred thousand of increased education funding per year for a forty three million dollar school district, which is. Woefully inadequate and exacerbates that revenue deficit. Third, revenue category is local receipts. That's composed of things like motor vehicle excise tax, ambulance fees, licenses and permits and the like. This was a pretty healthy growth category in the past decade, but it leveled off in recent years and we are. Staying cautious on our projections for now, just because some of these are more sensitive to economic headwinds. So we're projecting one percent here for a total of six and three quarters of a million. Final revenue categories, other sources and reserves. So fiscal twenty two budget cuts other financing sources and reserves by just over a half million dollars, nearly twenty percent. From the previous year for a total of two point two million and change. The super majority of that decrease is from a reduced use of free cash and stabilization in fiscal twenty two compared to the previous year. And so in total, what we're looking at in fiscal twenty two is the budget tapping into about eight hundred thousand of free cash and about a quarter million in stabilization funds. And that yields a total reserve spend of those two, right? Free cash and stabilization of one million fifty thousand. Since the last budget presentations on April fifth and seventh, I decided I felt it was most appropriate to use stabilization to close that last two hundred thirty thousand or so for. A variety of reasons, but in plain English, just we cut enough last year. We spent years building the stabilization account. That amount represents roughly six percent of the total balance, which is over three point seven million. Rainy day funds are there for a reason. I think it's the appropriate thing to do here and it meets the town's financial management guidelines. We're not using more than half of our free cash. We not only transferred a quarter of free cash to stabilization, last fall, we added back every dollar we we took when we thought state aid would be cut. And the policies stipulate that stabilization funds are appropriate for use during rare economic circumstances outside of our control. So it checks. All of those boxes. And our reserves are in a, they can always improve and they, we still want that to be a long term goal, but they are in a significantly better place than they were. Five years ago. So the town specifically built that stabilization fund up more than doubling it from two thousand seventeen to twenty one. That's the graph here on the left. You could see in fifteen, we were at a relative low point, below one point five million in the account. And right now we're at three point seven five million. For a budget our size that can go quickly. So using it prudently is still important. But this money was put there to protect us in difficult economic times such as fees. The use of reserves in total. In the budget I'm proposing would be the second lowest dollar amount in a decade. I think it's like six thousand dollars more than fiscal twenty. But it's actually the lowest amount of reserves as a percent of our spending since two thousand eight. The last, since the last override in the Great Recession. So what this chart I'm right shows you is our total reserve use. And then the orange line is what that means is a percent of our spending. Because the total amount you spend in a year is an important data point. But it's also good, I think, to look at it as, you know, a relative value of of your total budget, how much of that's being funded with reserves. And so next year would be one and a quarter percent, which is the lowest since. The the last override and two recessions ago. So I think that's by most standards, a pretty prudent step forward. So here's our revenue summary. I won't read through it line by line. The fiscal twenty two budget just shy of ninety three million dollars is a responsible step forward if we work out of a pandemic. In doing so, it responsibly taps reserves of lowest percent of spending since the last override and recession or two recessions ago. It's an improvement for sure. I'm pretty excited about some of the investments in it. But we need to also be be sober about the reality that we're, this is still just a partial rebuilding from the significant cuts last year. We still have fewer staff, even with these, if town meeting adopts it, than most comparable agencies and than we had ourselves two years ago. The operational investments are responsible and they're sensitive to most critical operating needs of the of the organization. And there's some important fiscal investments such as that OPEB funding. But again, important to remain. Realistic about the reality that we are still not at a point where we are sufficiently investing on an annual level. To offset long term liabilities in other areas such as capital. So kind of wrapping up the operating side, there's some long term considerations that we need to keep in mind. We had a structural revenue deficit before COVID will be exacerbated by it. We have shown. The community has shown, audits have shown, benchmarking over time has shown that. The town and schools do more with less, whether you're looking at from a per capita spend level, a personnel level. Our departments are exceptional. They do great work, but they do it with fewer resources than many of their peers. Federal stimulus, the American Rescue Plan Act will provide some relief in the coming years, which is great. And none of it is used in this budget for a couple of reasons. Chief among those reasons is we don't have the rules from the treasury yet. So. We move forward and we balance the budget. The good news is that means that that funding will be intact moving forward. But that funding is not recurring. So whatever assistance it can provide us will not be a permanent and structural fix. Because of that, it bears repeating that absent an override or other unknown fundamental change of a revenue. Picture in the coming years, our ability to sustain or improve services will continue to be difficult. That all being said, despite all those challenges, despite the structural challenges and the long shadow of COVID. Fiscal twenty two makes targeted restorations and investments to address critical service liability and infrastructure needs. Across a broad array of public service from kindergarten affordability to public health and voter access in a financially responsible manner. Dottie, I can just go right through capital or I can stop and take questions about operating budget. It's your call.
Why don't you go through the capital and then we can do all the questions at the end?
Sure. This will not be nearly as long. And sorry, you all get to be my my test run for town meeting. This is way too long, obviously, for that. The capital budget. So the capital needs of a town are great. If you're following along in your budget book that was sent to you, this is page. One twenty three. Of that book. So the capital needs of town are great. The total five year capital improvement plan is over fifty one million dollars in requests. The fiscal twenty two capital budget totals nearly twenty nine million, which is substantial. And it reflects the most urgent capital priorities as requested by our departments and prioritized by the capital planning committee. The overwhelming majority of that very large capital investment number, twenty six point two million is from enterprise accounts, all almost all of it from the water enterprise account. The general fund capital spend of just over two million reflects the most urgent investments across mainly public safety, health and security. Significant investments such as roadway funding and facilities remain unfunded, partially funded or deferred. Really broad picture. Some of the key investments in the capital budget will be replacement of fire engine fourteen, school security enhancements. Fifteen million dollars for an iron and manganese water plant construction for Red Mill Road. And over nine million in projected funding for up to three PFOS treatment plants. There is funding for DPW fleet replacement, although not complete or sufficient, as well as partial funding of facilities work. This is the capital budget recommendation. Again, I won't read through every single one of these line by line, but you could see the relative priority here. Is public safety. You know, police, fire, really timely things like leaks, security improvements, replacing really kind of decrepit parking lots. I think replacing a nineteen seventy forklift kind of says a lot. That's what fifty one years. Kind of shows you where the status of some of the fleet is. So really, really addressing those most critical needs. And then enterprises, I mentioned, all but forty four thousand of that is for water. On the general fund side, this is just a table of the typical amount of request and funding. So. Fiscal years fifteen through twenty one, on average, there's a request of about three point three million. We fund about two. So we fund two out of every three dollars on average of what's requested, which is not sufficient. The requested amount this year is quite significant. Your, if this is just general fund, you're looking at. Four and a half million. We're funding less than half of that for now. We will revisit some of these items in the fall. Enterprise funding. So this is gets its own slide because it's so significant. The largest component of this capital budget is enterprise capital numbers over twenty six million dollars for water. The highlights there, Red Mill Road Iron Magnes Plant, that's fifteen point four million. That is for wells three, five and seven. It's been necessary for years. It will deal with discoloration and elevated levels of iron magnes. It is in design and permitting now. And assuming it gets through that and through town meeting, it will advance to construction this summer. Another large investment from the water side is nine point two million for up to three PFOS treatment plants. That is in response to the new Massachusetts regulations, the DEP regs we were speaking about earlier tonight. To remove PFOS from those wells that are above the regulatory level, designs ongoing, the funding will finish that, get it out to bid and include construction. With a target of eighteen months. And finally, one point five million of that water capital ask is for ongoing water main replacements. This is just to really get some good work going. This is meant to be an annual investment. As part of the capital plan for water moving forward, we have a hundred and seventy miles of water pipe in Easton and about one out of five of those miles are. Cast iron from nineteen fifty or earlier. We want to get on top of those and start replacing that. One point five million will ensure that the system remains safe and reliable. Summary of the capital budget, it is an improvement over the prior year, but it can still only afford to fund the most critical and essential items. Top priorities of the capital planning committee are reflected in that funding schedule, public safety, fleet and vehicle security and significant water investments. Other critical needs like road funding are are being just indefinitely deferred at this time. That half million dollar annual borrow we were doing was meant to be a stopgap measure. In response to chronic level funding of chapter ninety from the state, but we cannot continue to borrow a half million every single year. As time passes, our roadways and our buildings age, obviously, and. New unfunded mandates from state and federal government, whether it's PFOS on the state level or stormwater management from a state level. Add tens and millions of capital costs to our existing facilities needs and compound the backlog. And state funding sources when they exist at all fail to keep pace with those costs. So we, in addition to this, have certain longer term capital needs such as municipal facility replacement. For public works and safety, not quantified in that number that are going to be on the horizon will necessitate substantial future capital investments. So next steps from here, you have capital and operating budget have been covered from the select board. I will. Hopefully answer all your questions and get your recommendations tonight. We're doing this again Wednesday night with finance committee and then bringing this forward. To town meeting on May seventeenth. To seek voters approval. So that is what I have.
That's a lot. So congratulations and thank you so much for being able to present this balanced budget to us like you do every year. A lot of people don't realize that we are required to have a balanced budget and it can be a real challenge every year. So there's never any extra money, that's for sure.
We don't have a money printer in our treasury.
That's right. Craig, you want to start with you? Any comments and questions?
Once again, Connor, I want to thank you and Wendy and your team for this very comprehensive presentation. I know how difficult it is, having seen this over the last four years. And and I don't, I don't really have any questions. I just want to, I sort of want to channel Tom Broussard, who was always would say that. If we don't spend the money on on capital. Needs right now, we're just going to end up spending more money later on. It's going to get more and more expensive to do all of those things. The roads is a perfect example of of the fact that the state has not increased funding for the roads, chapter ninety, for how many years, Connor? Twelve years?
There's been a couple of happy holidays thrown in there with a one off increase, but it sustainably, it's been available. It's out for as long as we can remember.
And it's understandable why we can't continue to borrow a half million dollars every year for that, but. People in town should understand that that is part of the issue that we face every day. So thank you, Connor. I appreciate it.
Mark?
Yeah, that was, that was one heck of a presentation. There's a lot of information there. You know, I don't have any questions or anything specific. Most of my questions were in, you know, the presentations over the, over the weeks with all the department heads. We went through everything. You know, the, I look at this, you know, this is the time where we look at it, the big picture, the budget is balanced. You guys, you did your job and now we have a job to do. But you know, there were some things that jumped out at me. And one of the things was. What makes a lot of this possible is reserves. And we have been so disciplined for so many years. If there's one thing I think in the people in this town can agree on is. It's our reserves save us. And it's not just, you know, years and years of continuing to to build up our reserve fund. It's tapping into it when it's necessary. It's following the guidelines that we set forth, but it's also disciplining ourselves to to keep doing it, to never stop doing it because. There could be another pandemic, you know, and Connor, you've been preaching this ever since I've known you. And it's true. And you know, I do think last year, obviously, that was one of the hardest years. We laid off so many people. It was, it was a really difficult year. And this year is born out of the difficulty from last year. And I'm, you know, I'm not a. I'm not a naive optimist, but I do look for silver lining in everything. I don't care what situation I'm in. And I do think that with what happened last year. And and the difficulty we went through last year and where we're at now, there, I'm going to look at it as an opportunity. So in so many of your departments, you've had to consolidate. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, but that, that, you know, that new way of looking at things. Out of that, you might experience, hey, maybe, you know, us being forced into this position, there's some good things that we've, we've found and created and combined out of this. And I think you've done a lot of that. And I, you know, look forward to that continuing. And then, you know, to to Craig's point, to channel the inner Tom. Investment in capital is an absolute no brainer. There is absolutely no logical valid reason against it that I've ever heard in my life. After years of being on the finance committee and on this board and that you have to invest in capital, it will come back and it will really haunt you if you do not. And and the way we're doing it, I think is very responsible. So. Well done.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, I'll just say that having the luxury of, you know, finance committee and. Being the Wednesday night pitch of Connor's, once he's really polished it up and. You know, it's, it's way better on Wednesday nights at ThinkCon, by the way. So thank you. It's been great too to learn over the last couple of years and see the thoughtfulness and. And listen to Tom Broussard preach about cost avoidance. And and that's, that's what this, you know, the capital budget committee does such a great job of thoughtfully looking at. Where our money is going to be spent and where it's most needed and. And Connor, thanks for, yeah, all the work behind the scenes and the long hours that nobody knows about. Nobody sees you toil away and thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie. Jen?
This is a great presentation. As always, Connor, thank you and thank you to your team for making it so clear. And I liked the the changes that you made, starting with some good news, which was kind of a combination of. Having good news to report out for once. It's kind of led me to a point that. You know, we've, we've had a good year in terms of the financial picture. But as you were speaking, I kept on thinking like, oh, SEMREC was a one off kind of. In terms of the financial picture, but as you were speaking, I kept on thinking like, oh, Semerick was a one-off kind of big savings event and. You know, state aid is still this precarious thing that we never know what's going to happen year to year. And you did a really good job of capturing that, you know, even though we've had a nice benefit financially. In terms of the municipal financial situation for the town. You know, we still have to be prudent looking ahead and planning for, you know, other things coming. They always will come and they always do come. I think the the investment you mentioned in the beginning, I'm really excited to hear about the. The tuition for kindergarten and both of my kids are done with kindergarten and it's still just, it's a fantastic thing. No parent should have to make the decision of whether or not to send their child to half day or full day based on finances. And like you mentioned, the outcomes for that are tremendous. The community EMS investment is also another awesome, really progressive, forward-thinking. Investment choice for the community. I was talking to one of the firefighters and it really blew my mind how. Forward-thinking our fire department is and we're very lucky to live in a community where there's strong leadership there. So that's, those are very, very exciting things to hear. And I also really liked in this presentation how you did the deeper dive into the capital. Which is really helpful to understand that more granular element of kind of what's happening there and. I look forward to kind of digging into that even more looking ahead. So thank you.
Thank you.
So going last on this one is really, the other members have said a lot of what I was thinking of too. The paramedicine and the full day kindergarten is just incredible. The PFOS, you know, expenditures that we're going to have to do is disappointing that we have to do it, but I'm pleased that we're. Going to be doing it and also putting the money in for OPEB is really important. It's a it's a big first step and a lot of communities aren't able to do that. So. Being able to try to to do that in a thoughtful way is really important. I'd also say that, you know, with the American Recovery Plan Act, the money that will be coming available with the federal government for infrastructure. In our communities is really important for us to be watching as I know you are, Connor, and I know you're in touch with our congressional delegation. It's so important that we have the staff available because if we are able to get grants for infrastructure projects, we have to have the people that can carry them out. And the DPW is so overburdened right now with all of the big projects that we've done. I think that the. The projects happen so smoothly and I know some people won't think that necessarily when their road's torn up in front of their house, but in the big picture. The work that they do is is because it looks like everything just was effortless. People don't realize sometimes and sometimes I even have to remind myself of what really goes on behind to make that happen that way. And if we're going to be well positioned to take advantage of some of that capital money in our community. We do need to make sure that we have the staff appropriate in the DPW. So that's something I really want to continue to look at. In this and future budgets. I'd also just say that this information is for the budgets are on the web. And each one of these departments has a summary of what they've done before, what they want to do. It's very comprehensive. Take a little chunk of it, you know, a little bit at a time for people at home that are interested in this. Any question you could possibly have about the budget is answered in this budget book. It's very, very comprehensive. And I know that we weren't able to do it last year for all of the reasons that you mentioned, but. And this year has not been any easier for for the capacity. It's been tougher because we have less capacity. But the fact that we prioritize the communication. With the people in our community on this budget is really important. So I hope people will take the time to take a look at it. That's it.
Thank you.
So we, if we don't have anything else on this, let's move on to the town meeting warrant review.
Sure. So attached to the board's packet is the second to last draft that you will see. It's dated today. From the May seventeen, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting. Town meeting will be at Stonehill College once again. They are being good neighbors and helping us out so that we have adequate space for social distancing for all of our voters. So it'll be at Sports Complex, seven o'clock, Monday, May seventeenth. We have a handful of articles that I would ask the board to consider tonight, but I do think we have a few attendees here. Stephanie Danielson, Jim Lee, and Greg Strange. So if the board is so willing, I would ask that we start with Article sixteen. Which is a report and budget of CPA committee and then get into zoning. I don't know if planning still has another meeting on in the other digital room. So, Dottie, is that acceptable? Okay, Mike, could you move Jim and Stephanie into the panel for Article sixteen and then swap Jim and Greg after that?
Jim.
Hello.
Thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Hello, Jim.
Our our budget includes administrative expense of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Debt service of five hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight. Affordable housing, this is the ten percent. That is going this time to Affordable Housing Trust, hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. And then we have reserves of historic, the same amount as to Affordable Housing Trust, the ten percent. And our budget reserve then increment is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, six, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's the budget for CPC for this year.
Any comments or questions from the board, Craig?
So Jim, does that include money for restoration of the town hall or is that a separate?
That was authorized last year.
That was last year?
Yes, that was approved by town meeting last year. This is a forward-looking budget.
So Affordable Housing Trust, once again, is a priority, which is excellent. Could you just repeat one, the last part of what you said about your, the ten percent?
Well, we have a ten percent set aside in the three categories that CPC. Cover historic, affordable housing and open space. And if that. That's set aside separately in our budget, if it's not spent in a year, it just accumulates for that purpose only. And so this year, the Affordable Housing. Set aside was stipulated to go to Affordable Housing Trust. We are in a reorganization phase in the CPC. We've redone our application process. As a result, we didn't have new projects come forward this year. We, you approved at your last meeting, a small amount for the high school field. To complete that project. And the Affordable Housing Trust is the only other item that we're spending money on this particular year.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mark.
Hi, Jim. How are you?
I'm fine.
This budget is seems considerably, or projects considerably less than previous years. Am I correct in my recollection of that?
That's right. Yeah, as I said, we're in a reorganization year and so we didn't invite new projects. We're just dealing with the Affordable Housing, which is every year expense and the one high school. Field completion amount, thirty-five thousand.
That's the only project really going on right now is thirty-five, it's the thirty-five thousand for the high school project field. That's it.
That and the Affordable Housing Trust increment to their budget, yes.
Okay, all right. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, just not to nitpick, but there are CPA projects ongoing, right, Jim?
That's right.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Yeah, I know, just for the public, if anyone is watching, understand that. So the CPA is in a. Reprioritization period, but there are significant CPA investments that'll still be doing good work in Easton this year. Pickleball construction, town hall, exterior renovation, and things of that nature that have been authorized in the past.
That's right.
Thank you. Jamie.
Yes.
No questions.
No questions. Jennifer.
Jim, no questions, but nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So I would just like to say I'm really happy to see the continued investment in the Affordable Housing. And I think the Affordable Housing Trust has been really doing some great work with the money that they do get through CPA funds. And really thank the community for their commitment to supporting CPA. We were one of the first communities that adopted it. The state makes a match, which is going to be a little bit higher than we were expecting for this year, which is really good. And, you know, it just shows that our community prioritizes that the things that people really. Appreciate about our community is the open space, the historic assets, and working on affordability. And that's the only thing that this money can be used for. So we can't, you know, this question comes up every year. Why can't we use this to hire more people? It can only be used for those categories. So that's made possible by the the cooperation and support of the community. And I just wanted to point that out. So without, Stephanie, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this or? No.
No, I think it's covered. I would, I'm going to do a little promo for Jim. I know he and Meredith Keach, who is also a member. Of the CPC did videotaping to talk about CPA and. What it can and can't be used for and the different projects that the CPC has advanced to town meeting in the past. So. If anyone can catch that on ECAT, please do.
That's terrific. Maybe we can share that on social media amongst ourselves as well. All right, if we don't have anything else, are we making a motion to include and recommend Article sixteen?
I would request that, yes, please.
Move to include and recommend Article sixteen.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bodger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Thanks, Jim. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, and so we're going to swap Jim out with Greg and look at Article eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Yeah, so while Greg is being moved into panel, this year for a town meeting warrant, what we've done is. Zoning articles can sometimes be a bit lengthy and when they get. Just placed straight into the warrant, sometimes it gets a little tough to follow. And so. The way that we tried to streamline it a little bit this year is you'll see the the main summary and the kind of plain text explanation for each article. And they all direct everyone to the zoning supplement, which has the kind of really technical stuff that Greg and Stephanie work on. So that, those are bookmarked for you in your packet. I just wanted to call those out before turning it over to Greg and or Stephanie.
I didn't know any better. I think he just said zoning was boring.
Well, Gregory.
Oh, well, first of all, Jen and Jamie, congratulations and wish you the best.
Thank you.
So we have four articles this year. Do you want me, they're pretty short. You want to go through all of them, Dottie, and then open to questions? Or you want to do one at a time?
Nope, knock them all out, Greg.
Okay, so Article eighteen, probably the most, the largest one, has to do with the Queeset Commercial District, Sub-District C. Just as a bit of a refresher, eight years ago when we formed the Queeset Commercial District, which is basically. One, one thirty-eight from the, I think from Stoneforge down to about Dean Fuel. There are three sub-districts. The one in question, Sub-District C, runs from Dean Fuel, the intersection. With, with, actually, that's one twenty-three, up to. Little past El Mariachi Plaza, I think. And there are three large. In these three sub-districts, there are three large properties that will probably help guide. The redevelopment of this area. The Korea's Plaza, which we think of the, you know, the plaza that has seen better days across from Dean Fuel. What I'll call El Mariachi Plaza, and then the marketplace, up on the other end, the Eastern Marketplace. And if you were called two years ago, we tweaked the zoning and we approved a very exciting mixed-use project. With Ed Walsh to redevelop Korea's Plaza. It was going to be four buildings, two very large buildings with a. A new downtown look right on top of the road. Ground floor would be commercial and then above would be a mix of commercial and residential. There was also his corporate office. And a standalone residential unit. As we know, brick, brick and mortar, commercial has been going downhill for some time. And COVID certainly hasn't helped. Ed came to us actually prior to COVID and discussed. The difficulties with the project because many lenders felt it was a bit heavy on commercial development. Basically, looking at roughly thirty apartments or thirty residential units. But the the project required that for every square foot of residential area, there needed to be twice the amount in commercial area. And the request came in to possibly flip those, go two-thirds residential, square footage, one-third commercial. And back, truth be told, back when we were working with Judy Barrett eight or nine years ago in analyzing this district. That actually was her recommendation at the time to go two-thirds commercial. But, you know, we have very limited business footprint zoning in town. We were, you know, we loathed to kind of give that away. So we said, well, let's try it. But it seems that. When you think of, you think of downtown village, think of a lot of mixed-use, ground floor is commercial, be it a restaurant, be it a service, be it an office. And above that, maybe a two or three floors of residential. So we looked at it. We had a lot of talk. We talked to a lot of folks in town, a lot of stakeholders, and we agreed that it was. In the best interest of the district to, seeing that eight years have gone by, to make that flip, to go to. Two-thirds residential, one-third commercial. There's no increase in the residential units. It's the same density. It just, it just gives the ability to build a little less commercial space, nothing that keeps them from from doing more. But we just wanted to, you know, give them a bigger toolbox to to try to do things that we've talked about diversified housing types, walkable neighborhoods, economic development. And I think any of those three large projects that I started this presentation with, and once we get one of those to pop. I think we'll really start, can be, you know, really, can be the tinder, if you will, to to help, you know, direct. The redevelopment of that district, which certainly could could use it. So we're, you know, we're looking, we're keeping it in a special permit process. Trying to, you know, really get a get a project that hits a home run, just trying to help out with something that's maybe a little more fundable. Or fin- financeable. So so that change is, so that's. That's Article eighteen, the flip. And there's also, there is one coming off of the. What we did last year at Furnace Village, we also threw a line in that says you could possibly do more residential units. If allowed by special permit by the planning board. That is, I guess, I'd just say if that's if you really. Blow us away with the project, be it, you know, mitigation for the town or some spectacular project, that was something that had been asked. Threw it in there, but we were really keen on keeping the density where it's at. But we gave a little backdoor through a through a special permit public process if something came along to to give us, to give the town more options. So that's Article eighteen. Article nineteen, if you think back to last November, that stormy night. At Stonehill, when we had the quorum call at, we were so close, so close. So this is the, you know, if you remember, we passed, there were three articles that had to do with. The Furnace Village District and the first two passed, the last one, which is basically the one with all the meat in it. The dimensional and density regulation. So this is, talks about X square feet per unit, you know, building setbacks, et cetera. Same stuff we presented last year, just we have to go before because because we had the quorum call. So nothing, nothing has changed on that. Since town meeting. Article twenty. Also has to do with Furnace Village. If you recall, think back last year, the the creation of that zoning over the eighteen months. Saw basically four different. Planning directorships, only three different plane, two different planning directors, one interim, but about two weeks before town meeting. about two weeks before town meeting, I realized that, you know, our zoning map was off, we'd missed a couple parcels. I was thinking, well, you know what I can do? I can make a motion on the floor. But I would think back to that stormy night. I think I would have been Buddha if I admitted emotions on the floor. So two parcels we're adding in. One, if you think of where Walgreens used to be or where the used to be the mobile station, now it's called All Town Fresh, I believe. There's that that sort of road, that little service road that comes off of CBS and goes in the back of where Walgreens was and now the Dollar Store, there's basically, I'll call it a house on an island. It's directly behind that gas station. That parcel, it's a one-acre parcel, that was always intended to be part of the Furnace Village Depot Street Subdistrict. And then the second parcel, four ninety-seven Rear Foundry Street, it's a parcel that, interesting parcel, it's basically behind Maguire's. It actually runs out onto one oh six in front of the condos next door where that that's a stream out there. I don't think you'd ever see that developed, but there is potential. It's a little crazy the way the land's chopped up back there, but there's potential behind the Maguire's building to to possibly do something there. So again, in the, you know, under the guise of economic development, we we wanted to include that. So that's those two parcels. And then the last one, Article twenty-one, zoning, this came up, the Kevin, Kevin Griner, the building inspector and Stephanie reached out to me, I guess, a couple of months ago. And a couple of times, folks had wanted to use shipping containers for permanent structures, not not colorful stacked houses like you see on Pinterest, but just put down in the yard, sort of as a, as a garage. And the thought was, I don't think that's necessarily good for property value. I don't know if we really want to do that. But there was really nothing in the bylaw that Kevin saw that wouldn't, that kept him from issuing the permit. So this is there to to keep that from becoming a permanent structure going forward. Not that you, you can't use them. We have, we have, it's in our bylaw now, up for a year for for construction purposes, et cetera. But this is just, you know, I I I think using shipping containers as permanent storage is probably not very good long term for for property value. So that's that's, that's the four articles in a nutshell. I don't think I missed anything, Stephanie. I don't know if you thought of anything.
Thanks, Greg. I appreciate it and I appreciate the concise delivery.
You don't say that often about me, do you?
You don't hear every day. Greg, any comments, questions?
Just a quick question on the on Article twenty, twenty-one. Greg, the shipping container, is that would be what about from commercial space? If somebody had a a commercial building, they wanted to put that in there for storage, is that not approved? Or is that only for for residential use?
Greg, I believe it's only residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yep.
If you look at line B, it talks about residential storage structure.
Yeah.
That's good. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg, how are you?
Good. Was it, was that Mark? I couldn't tell who said that. It kind of, no, I had an audio issue. Forgive me.
Article eighteen, so I I understand the need for it. You know, the developer for, we're in that area, one of the developers is having difficulty getting things going. And in order for things to move, something has to give. Otherwise, we'll be, you know, stuck with that quarter, never changing, despite investing millions of dollars in infrastructure improvements. So I just want to be clear, you know, that's a very long way of saying that planning and zoning basically has complete latitude to approve or disprove of any ratio of commercial versus residential. Is that correct?
No, no, the ratio, you have to have at least one-third commercial.
So the one-third, two-third will always exist, it's just the volume of size can can can.
Right, there there are limits, right, there are limits on the number of bedrooms, for, you know, for example. So, you know, so average, average one-bedroom apartment in Massachusetts in twenty twenty was six hundred and seventy-four square feet. So a proposal will come in, we'd be looking at it, it would be, you know, you know, ten thousand square feet of residential. So he'd have to have at least thirty, you know, thirty-three or square feet of, no, five thousand square feet. Sorry, I'm coming up with a very long water treatment plant needing five thousand square feet of of residential.
Okay.
I mean, of commercial, of commercial.
Okay. So the ratios never change, just the size of the projects?
The only thing, there is you know, we kind of went back and forth, but we said, you know, let's try it because we can always change this. We put that line in that says the planning board can allow more residential units by special permit, but it would, you know, it would have to be, you know, I said that way, it's in a, it's in a public forum, it's in a special permit. And, you know, we, I think we, I prided ourselves on how, you know, we we really reach out a lot at planning boards. So if and when a project came that wanted more, it would have to be, in my opinion, it would have to be one, you know, it would have to be a tremendous project too, because we want to keep Easton special.
Right. Well, I I think in order to promulgate economic development in those areas, we need to introduce more tools because, you know, what we have isn't isn't entirely working. You just need to drive through it and see. So this sounds good. That's my only question, clarification, and then I'm good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Good comments. Jamie?
No questions. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
And Jen?
Hi, Greg.
Hi, Jen.
So a quick question. You said there were about thirty units at the, as opposed, sorry, as it relates to Article eighteen, about thirty units of residential?
Yes, thirty, yeah. He kept going back and forth. It's about, I think it's thirty or thirty-one residential units as that we approved two, two years ago.
What types of housing, like what types of, like one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Well, yeah, it it was, it was all rental in that original proposal, and there was, I don't have it handy, but there was a mix of one, there was limited, there's mix of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms and some three. But there is, right in the bylaw, there is a cap. And we can, I'll find it for you and I can send it to you. But it's, we were, you know, we did want to limit, you know, we were looking at one-bedrooms because we wanted to take advantage of Stonehill. We didn't want to put in thirty-three and four-bedroom units. We wanted to have a mix of, you know, residences in there.
Is it fair for me to ask why one person voted against recommending it or maybe watch the meeting?
Until you said that, I'd, how dare they? Yeah, I, I, you know, I, this was, you know, at this project, we've spent a lot of time over the, with, I mean, we had four or five different board configurations, really over the last eight or nine years with this. And I I think, and Stephanie, correct, I think the the vote against it was more you know, we had, we had done enough and.
Well, I think it was, one of the things that the board talked a lot about was they, while they recognized the need to help move the one project along, they they didn't want the changes to just reflect the needs of one project. And they talked about looking, reevaluating that that district zoning. And they committed to doing that after town meeting to continue to look at it, watching, looking at how the market is changing and how the changes in retail are affecting districts. So I think that vote was more, really wanted to look at the bigger picture. Which, which again, the board has, has all unanimously agrees that that's what they they want to do in the long term and will start working on that almost immediately.
Okay. And the last question I have is the shipping container question. You you mentioned there was one project that kind of triggered this. Has there been other demand for that? Or is this just been a one-time, I want a shipping container for a shed kind of situation or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I I thought Kevin said it had happened twice in the last couple of years.
Yes, yeah, and.
And it was just sort of a loophole.
Okay.
Right. And his experience was in other communities that they limit in residential areas, those type of
Yeah.
structures.
Yeah, that was surprising. We were one of the few towns around to, you know, compared with some of our peers. It had just never come up before. Most other towns had something against that. So that's what we looked and we said, because you don't want to be too reactionary, but at the same time, you know, like that's you know, I think we're better to avoid that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think these are great. I think that, you know, sometimes the zoning doesn't really capture what you think it will when you first do it. And having the flexibility to make these modifications is really important. And, you know, the project down at Carreras Plaza, it has to be marketable whether it's Ed Walsh or whether it's another developer. It, you're, you're not really, you don't want to tailor the zoning to the specific developer or project, but you have to look at what that does to the whole area. So I I think that this was very thoughtfully done. So I don't have any other comments or questions other than just to say thank you for, you know, continuing to be very thoughtful about these zoning changes. I hope that that people will stay till the end. These are really important. They're really important for economic development. And don't, don't sell us short by one, by one warrant article.
I'll be chaining the doors this time.
Hope there won't be a storm.
Yeah, exactly.
With that said, we'll tackle these one at a time, starting with Article eighteen. If, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to include and recommend?
I move to include and recommend Article eighteen.
And Lamb?
And Mark Lamb, second. Back to you, Craig.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Full genetti, yes. Craig, Article nineteen?
Move to include and recommend Article nineteen.
Second lamb.
Back to you, Craig.
Yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Article twenty?
Move to include and recommend Article twenty.
Second lamb.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And Article twenty-one?
Move to include and recommend Article twenty-one.
Second lamb.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Terrific. Thank you. And thanks. I know it's been a long night for you, Greg and Stephanie, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Nice to see you, Greg.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
It's Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have to go back and look at some of the other ones, but one thing I noticed before I forget is that on the in the packet, there's Article seventeen for CPA funding for the high school practice field, but it's not listed on the agenda.
That was voted on before.
Oh, okay.
So you, the board previously voted on Article seventeen. You reviewed sixteen tonight, which is on the agenda, so you're good.
Okay, I just didn't know if, why it was in here in the description. Sometimes we vote to include but wait to recommend. I I just couldn't think if there was a reason it was in here. All right, so we will be going back to Article five, the supplemental fiscal year twenty twenty-one budgets.
Yes, and I think Finance Director Wendy Nine-Yale has been hanging on for a while and is still here. Mike, could you move her over, please? So Article five, we typically hold a supplemental budget article on the docket each year. Wendy will confirm for me if this is the final draft, but I think it is. Is that right, Wendy?
Sorry, the final draft of.
Supplemental budget is only looking at the sewer and bearest will be dealt with a finance committee. Is that accurate?
It it is, but what I would ask is that you vote to include it tonight, but not vote a recommendation just yet because I do think that we may need to increase the amount for the sewer. The amount that's in there in the explanation right now is just for the membrane. But there are going to be some additional costs that I, I do think we are going to need potentially additional funding for.
Okay.
So then just a vote for inclusion of the article for now, and we will finalize this one way or another for your next meeting, which is a week from now.
Correct.
I'd like to vote to include it, but not to recommend it.
Second, Bajra.
Wait a minute, the motion would be to include. Don't say anything about recommending or not because it's, it sounds like you're, you're.
Clarification.
Oh, okay. So you have to clarify, all we're asking.
Now, it's, it's been clarified. I got it now.
Fuck me.
All right. Craig, the motion is to include Article five.
I move to include Article, I was waiting for Mark to do it, but I'll do it. I move to include Article five.
Second lamb.
Okay, Greg.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Article seven fiscal year twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Sure. So this is the article that corresponds with the presentation you all received tonight. So I would ask, if the board's willing, for you to take a vote to include and recommend.
Move to include and recommend Article seven.
Lamb, second.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Can I ask you a question before I say yes?
Sure.
The dollar amount's different than I thought what you presented.
It is. Good Ted.
Okay.
That is because the budget that we present includes funds not subject to appropriation. So there are certain fees and costs we have to pay by law that are not subject to town meeting appropriation. We carry those in a budget for the sake of having an accurate balance book for the public, but the voters of town meeting do do not need to and don't have the legal authority to vote on them. So that's what that delta is.
Fantastic. I probably knew this in the past, but I was like.
But someone's, that means you're looking at it, which is great.
So Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Good eye, Jen. Okay, Article ten fiscal year twenty-two capital budget.
Anything else? I was gonna, I'll move to include and recommend Article ten.
Second lamb.
Back to you, Craig.
RGS.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And Article thirteen, acceptance of roadway easements, Foundry Street and Sawmill.
So this was on the agenda. I'm still not asking for any action. I need to check with the developer. This is associated with the Sawmill project that is still going through permitting. The select board executed a mitigation agreement a couple of months back that stipulated that as part of mitigation, that development would build a traffic light at Foundry and Quanticat. The town will need to take some easements there, which will be granted to us, but I I don't know if it is advanced to a point of design where we could accept them. I see Mark nodding. I think Mark was the one who specifically said that's hyper-aggressive on timing. So he may be right. And we may be pulling this from a warrant. So I'll check with the developer. If it's not ready this week, we'll pull it off for a final warrant next week.
Okay, terrific. And Article fifteen, increasing the number of licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the present premises in the town of Easton.
Sure. So this is a a new article in this draft, and I'm gonna actually ask the Assistant Town Administrator to just give an overview of this. This is just trying to be responsive to the business community. And it's something that we've done before with incremental financing districts downtown. So Mike, could you just give a broad overview of 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 this article, please?
Absolutely. So just by way of background for the board, the Massachusetts Liquor Control Act is what controls liquor licenses in Massachusetts. And that act places a quota on the number of alcoholic beverages that any one town can issue. And it's, I I don't know the exact formula off the top of my head, but it's a quota based on the population of the community as determined by the most recent federal census. So I I know we're about to, or maybe just some twenty twenty data was released, but we're still working off the twenty ten census. And once a municipality has reached that license cap, they can no longer issue additional liquor licenses under those categories. And the only way to get an additional license is to file a petition with the state to request an additional license. So what this article does is request town meeting, give the select board authorization in their capacity as the local licensing authority to grant one additional license above the maximum allowed for sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises. So again, just by way of background, there's two types of liquor license, on-premises, which is your typical restaurant, you know, bar. And then there's off-premises, which typically referred to as a package store. You know, also, obviously, it could be a convenience store, grocery store, things of that nature. So we, as Connor mentioned, we were approached by the business community. There's interest in opening a liquor store in the Five Corners sewer district, district area. As Connor also mentioned, once before, as part of the Northeastern Village TIF, the Tax Improvement Financing, the town petitioned the legislature to grant an additional package store license for Northeastern Village, which now is up and running. And so this would be similar, and the article is based off of that same exact language as reviewed by council. But instead of the the TIF district, it's the DIF, the District Improvement Financing for the Five Corners Sewer District. And, you know, again, this is often done, or almost always done for. And you know, again, this is often done um or almost always done for economic economic purposes. Um, just for background, I pulled up our most recent quota report. So um I'll just give it to you all, but for for on premises, which this does not deal with directly. Uh, we we are allowed twenty-four all alcoholic beverage licenses. Uh, we currently have twenty-two issues, and there are two remaining. And again, that's for restaurants. And we have uh five allowed for uh wine and malt and wine and beer. Um, and we have um two issued, and so we have um three available licenses. For off premises, in this case, what we're talking about the package stores, we have ten total, five all alcohol. Um, and five wine and malt, and we are at zero available. And again, we actually have one additional that is a reflection here. We should six alcohol because of that one through special legislation.
So this will be for an all alcohol beverage?
Correct.
Any questions?
Michael, just clarify for me. So we have no slots available, but we're gonna create one? I I'm I'm a little confused.
Yep. So so under the quota system, we we have none available. Uh, but the law allows us to petition the legislature to. Grant us an additional license for a specific use, specific area. In this case. We've uh we've put forward for the the Five Corners District.
So this is so we can ask the legislature to go ahead and potentially give us that one additional one?
Correct.
So it doesn't happen until they do, until they act?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you.
We'll have a quick question, Mike. Um, so uh let's say uh if I carry this through and we we petition the legislature for that one more. And we move from ten to eleven, one above the max, does our max now become eleven? And because this statute stands. We can then do it again and and move from eleven to twelve and just constantly, now that I want to constantly add package stores all over town, but. Will this open the door so whenever we want one more, the select board can petition the legislature for always one more? Or is this a one done deal?
Uh, as far as I know, there there is no limit for these special petitions. I mean, the town could continually petition. Uh, we do limit this, so if in the text of the article, the license is limited to that district only. It does not count, uh, you know, so our our technically our quota would still be ten. Um, and now we have one additional, so really isn't eleven. It's really ten plus one extra for a very specific purpose. And now we'd have ten plus two for specific purposes. It doesn't change the kind of bottom line quota. It just adds additional. Special legislation licenses to to our.
So I guess Michael might follow up to Mark's question. If if we have that eleven, and then that that. Individual, that company decides not to not to renew, does that then fall back to ten, or is that still available for someone else?
Uh, well, well, it's the license is returned to the town, but it's available for the town to reissue. Uh, but again, meeting the same requirements, it would have to be located in that Five Corners.
Five Corners District, okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Michael.
Of course.
Jamie, any questions?
No, that was great. Thank you, Michael.
Jen?
No questions. Thank you.
And um I don't have any questions either, other than to say the census um data is starting to, they're getting ready to release some of that. I think there were. Um, there were several releases of emails that I got today. I'm not really sure specifically what they were about, but. Um, that might make a difference to us in the future as well. So um if there are no other questions, um would somebody like to make a motion to include and recommend Article fifteen?
I move to include include and recommend Article fifteen.
Second Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. So thank you, Michael. And thank you, Wendy, for hanging in here with us this late.
Thank you, guys.
I think I got the wall. All right, um, next is the standing update for COVID response.
Sure. So um I promised to be more succinct on this than I was for the budget.
Famous last word is Connor.
If I could just pull that up.
So while Connor's pulling that up, I think that, you know, we've um we've seen the good and the bad about having uh video meetings in our work and in our. Volunteer work, but one of the advantages of that was getting to see Mark's uh little kids come in for their kiss goodnight. So that was. That makes this really human and special.
It's a benefit, and it's an important process of the night.
It is.
So um as has been our practice for over a year now, I try to just give a board a brief uh summary of the data that we are looking at here in Easton to inform the decisions. We are making uh in planning for and responding to COVID. Uh, EMA uh leadership continues to connect a couple of times a week. Uh, we've scaled that down over uh time, uh thankfully. As uh conditions have improved. Um, so starting on the big picture, looking at the US, uh. I'm uncertain if this term is technically correct anymore about the epicenter uh being in the United States, because obviously the current situation in India is a catastrophe. Which is uh really heartbreaking. Uh, but uh we do uh lead the world in cumulative cases uh for now. Uh, United States passed thirty-two million cases uh of COVID. Uh, over five hundred and seventy thousand residents uh of this country have lost their life. Uh, but thankfully be rolling seven day average on cases as well as uh deaths in the country continue to uh slowly decline. And the percent positive rate is roughly uh six percent. So this is the visualization of the rolling uh weekly trend of COVID in the United States. Uh, right now, uh we're looking at fifty-eight thousand uh per day. Uh, there's still improvement to be made there, but it is moving in the right direction. Obviously, it's dropped. Uh significantly from the quarter million a day average we were seeing in January, which was pretty horrific. Uh, it it bumped up a little bit of a spring, uh early spring months, and has been uh starting to decline uh again. So um. Another key stat that uh folks keep an eye on is hospitalizations. Uh, you know, in the worst of a winter surge, more than a hundred thirty thousand uh. Uh, residents of the United States from a hospital that has dropped to below forty thousand today, uh which is itself. Um, actually an increase of where we were in April uh earlier uh this month. Early April, we were thirty-four thousand in the hospital in the United States. Now it's closer to forty. Uh, that is not thankfully being driven by Massachusetts. Massachusetts hospitalizations are uh dropping slowly. But there are some states like Michigan that are having a a bit of a a third uh wave right now. Um, which you could see represented here. This is uh just aggregation of some key metrics on COVID. Uh, daily new cases, the infection rate and the test positive rate. Um, so you see there are still some states with localized outbreaks. And a high case count um that is still being contended with. Uh, so three weeks ago, uh Massachusetts technically had uh been trending upwards, so we were uh in the red by this chart. We have moved out of that now. Which is good. So here, the Commonwealth, uh roughly six hundred forty thousand cumulative cases, over seventeen thousand residents of the Commonwealth have lost their life. Uh, the seven day average test positive is moving uh quite low, which is a good thing. Uh, you're at uh one and three quarters percent. Uh, daily cases in Massachusetts are trending downward, which is great. Uh, we, much like the nation, had a a pretty severe uh surge in the winter. Where we were nearing uh six thousand cases a day, um which was frankly a a kind of unimaginable number uh before Thanksgiving. And uh we have dropped quite a bit from there. Uh, we had a bit of a pickup again when we moved into phase four with some reopenings, and that has now started to decline. Um, that could be uh a confluence of factors, including weather improving, people being outside, but also uh Massachusetts is now one of the leading states in the United States. On the vaccination campaign, which is super exciting. Uh, hospitalizations in the US uh in Massachusetts right now are about six forty-one. That's down from twenty-two hundred this winter, which itself was roughly half of the really uh uh appalling four thousand plus last spring. So three weeks ago, we had seven oh seven in a hospital. Now it's six forty-one. So we're slowly moving in the right direction there. So Easton, uh Easton is in the yellow. Uh, still, we've been kind of hanging out there for quite some time after spending most of uh the holidays in the red. Uh, some communities around us are still in that uh higher uh risk or higher spread category in the red. Um, you know, there is still work to be done. South Shore in particular uh is having a bit of a hard time. Bristol County. Uh, and some of those South Shore towns have some of the lowest rates of vaccine uptake in the Commonwealth, uh which I'm sure uh is playing a role here. Uh, Easton is not uh in that category. We have relatively good vaccine uptake here. We'll get into those stats in just one moment. So this is what the state map looked like three weeks ago. Here we are today. I don't have the exact numbers on how that shifted. It looks like it's just moving around, but. Um, we are still making some slow progress. Uh, we've broke two thousand total cases now in Easton um since the pandemic began, uh and sixty-five residents have uh. Lost their life uh to COVID. Uh, daily new cases per one hundred thousand uh has uh, you know, dropped uh. Pretty significantly from the end of January to uh early March. Uh, there were economic reopenings towards the end of March, and you see a bit of an uptick there. And we've kind of flatlined there for a little bit. Um, but our weekly new cases did take a dip recently, uh and hopefully um that continues as vaccine uh uptake. Continues. Uh, Easton's uh COVID test positive rate uh is hovering uh below the state average currently, which is a good thing. Uh, most recent uh report from DPH, Easton's test positive rate was one uh point five five. That's trending down. Uh, which is a good thing. Uh, we'll want to keep our eye on as Stonehill uh uh goes through graduation. And uh the students go home for the semester. Um, that will now then the second time where the Stonehill uh uh surveillance testing program has come online and offline. And you see in those red months in particular, when the students were home, not having that kind of robust, ongoing asymptomatic test regimen. Uh, reduces the number of negatives in our uh test pool and and then drives up the test positive rate. Uh, which peaked at over ten percent uh in January. So uh hopefully, uh we never see ten percent again. Um, but we may see a minor uptick in May once Stonehill uh sends students home. That does remain to be seen. Depending on how the vaccination campaign goes. It it may be a relative non-factor. Um, all this is to say, uh, you know, folks uh are are doing a good job in Easton with their uh uh with vaccinations. Uh, and generally being pretty good and compliant with masking. So uh, you know, keep up the good work and keep doing the. The things you need to do to protect yourself and your family. Um, as of, since our last meeting, uh the the vaccine campaign in Massachusetts reached its final phase. Uh, and actually everywhere in the United States, as of April nineteenth, uh sixteen and older, uh you can get a COVID vaccine. It is free. It does not matter if you are insured, uh any of that. Uh, you can go to mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. And I believe now appointments are relatively uh easy to get, which is a complete transformation from two months ago. So a really exciting progress there. Um, a slide we haven't updated in a bit, status of municipal services. Um, you know, obviously, public safety has been operating the entire time. Public Works has been back in person for a very long time. Um, tomorrow uh is the first day uh where we will be resuming uh limited walk-in services of town offices. And Frothingham Hall. So moving forward, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, during those buildings, normal business hours, folks can. Um, uh walk in for service if they can't, you know, meet their needs online and remotely. We will obviously have all the safety precautions that uh everyone is pretty on board with at this point in place. Masking is required. Uh, you know, we'll ask people to be mindful of their time and and not bring uh excess parties with them. Um, you know, all of our services that we've been able to functionally provide remotely for over a year now are obviously still there. We still want folks, if someone you could do remotely, just do it that way. Uh, please, we still want to minimize contact. Um, although we are uh excited for folks who who may have some different needs to be able to to get back in and 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 see uh see us again. So for now, we're we're it's kind of a soft opening. We're doing uh not five days. Um, not only to ease that back into our operations, but frankly, because unless and until these budgets are approved, we still have. Far too few people in some of these departments uh to functionally manage five days a week. Um, so we're gonna give that a go and see how it goes, but uh the staff here have been awesome um across all of our departments the entire time. I've been really good with safety precautions. I have a lot of confidence in them. Um, and again, folks can still get everything they need online or on the phone. Uh, Mondays and Wednesdays, we will take appointments. Which we've had available since Labor Day. Um, but frankly, I've not had a huge amount of demand, uh because most things, if somebody calls and asks for an appointment, they usually can get it taken care of. Faster on the phone than it takes for him to get an appointment and show up. So. Uh, that'll be a a new step for us. Moving into uh vaccine update, as I mentioned, anyone who is sixteen up, who lives, works, or studies in Massachusetts is now eligible for a vaccine. If they go to a mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. Anyone who has any kind of technological barriers or access challenges can call two one one for assistance. Uh, statewide data, um, United States has administered uh over two hundred and twenty, we're nearing two hundred thirty million doses of vaccine, which is great. Uh, over forty-two percent of the United States has received at least their first dose. Uh, we were averaging over three million doses per day, and that average is actually starting to dip a a small amount in the United States. Uh, as we're reaching a kind of saturation point where um the limit of supply is no longer the inhibitor. But it will be the limit of demand in uh some of the other states in the country. Massachusetts is one of the leading states in the nation uh now. I was uh not uh shy about my criticism of some of the rollout earlier. Uh, this year when cities and towns were tasked with some of the most critical first phases of uh vaccine administration, and then that ability was eliminated. Uh, but, um, that said, the numbers uh that these mass vaccine sites are putting out are pretty uh spectacular. So I I will give credit where it's due there. I think you look at the Heinz Convention Center as partnered with FEMA on the federal government level. They do seven and nine thousand shots a day, which is just unbelievable. So Massachusetts now is nearing six million doses. More than fifty percent of the state. Has had at least their first dose, a third are fully vaccinated. Um, it's great to see. Easton is doing uh pretty well, particularly if you dig into this data and look at the more vulnerable groups. People who are more likely to get severely ill or uh unfortunately lose their life to COVID. Um, really spectacular numbers, eighty-nine percent of our residents over seventy-nine have gotten their first shot, and seventy-seven percent of them are fully vaccinated. Eighty-six percent of folks over sixty-five uh first shot, seventy percent fully vaccinated, which is just really wonderful to see that. Um, we're nearing three quarters of all seniors in Easton, not only having their first shot, but being fully vaccinated, which is great. Uh, you're seeing, it obviously goes because of the phasing of vaccinations of the Commonwealth. It basically goes in reverse age order. But even now, uh we're nearing fifty percent of every uh of people between fifty and sixty-four being fully vaccinated. Three quarters of them haven't gotten their first shot. So um just really exciting uh to see this uh progress and um. Uh, you know, I this includes zero to nineteen. Um, it's a DPH uh export. So that kind of brings the total number down, because obviously anyone six under sixteen can't get a vaccine. Um, but so I'd be interested to see what the total is. If you go down to that bottom uh row, if you pull out the sixteen and uh or under sixteens. But we're at uh fifty percent of the community. Uh, when you take into account all age groups, including. You know, thousands who can't even get it because they're fifteen or younger, fifty percent have received at least their first dose. So that's uh, that's great. Since your last meeting, uh we've wrapped our municipal vaccine operations. We um. Uh, ha- held a a another clinic at Frothingham, uh and and there was uh two hundred and ten doses administered total. Um, these are probably the last clinics EMA will run uh in partnership with the Health Department uh and Fire, along with all the support from our other departments. So um can't, uh will never be able to say enough thank you to Easton Fire, Health, our CERT team. Uh, MRC and uh volunteers for all the work they did to make that possible, as well as all the other departments, police, fire. Um, who helped us out. Um, this is the visualization of our uh vaccines administered. So we uh, when all was said and done, did thirteen hundred and ten uh total doses. About fifty fifty first and second doses, one hundred percent administration rate, zero waste uh period. Not one dose uh was missed. So um, and that's not because every single person showed up. Uh, there was a lot of folks who, you know, life happens. They couldn't make it. Something came up. Uh, Health and and a lot of administrative staff did a really good job maintaining backup lists of eligible populations to make sure that uh we never wasted a a single. Uh, dose of vaccine. Um, this included homebound visits uh to the Easton Housing Authority and and a lot of just really great work. So I I cannot credit and say thank you enough um to our first responders or health staff uh for for doing that. Um, we could have done more. Um, uh, but I am very, very proud of the work they did and uh, you know, made a, I I think, a pretty meaningful impact. In hundreds and hundreds of people's lives, particularly in our uh senior population, who were folks we were able to get vaccines out to. So. Very proud of that. So that is what I have on COVID.
Thanks, Connor. One thing that I wanted to add on that is um in uh the town crier and on our social media. FEMA has come out with funeral assistance. Um, so they're accepting applications for financial assistance for funeral costs. For people who died of COVID nineteen after January twentieth, twenty twenty. And um. For eligible individuals, it's a maximum of nine thousand dollars um per funeral and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars per application. So the details on that are in the town crier and social media. It's um, you know. I'm sure that it, for a lot of people, it that's a shocking, unexpected, big expense. So this is really great assistance, and I hope people will share this um and tell tell their friends and family. Um, whether you're in Easton or other towns, it's it's a really important benefit to to the community. Um, so with that, I'm gonna take the general minutes, and then we'll go back to the town administration. Um, so with that, I'm gonna take the general minutes and then we'll go back to the town administrator notes and the select board notes. Um, for the general minutes dated April 1st, 2021, would somebody like to make a motion to accept those?
So moved, Barger.
Second Lamb.
Barger Lamb?
Barger, yes?
Lamb, yes.
Scotty, are we, uh, standing?
Nope, you can vote to accept those.
Okay. Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Um, any town administrator notes other than that Connor? Nope. Did you wanna talk about the ribbon cutting at Semrec? Just tell us how exciting that was.
Yes, sorry. Um.
It feels like lifetime ago.
Yeah, we did a groundbreaking for the school and the ribbon cutting for Semrec since the last meeting. Um, so Semrec officially, uh, had its ribbon cutting ceremony, um, I think on April 16th. Um, really exciting, uh, great work by, uh, the four towns there, uh, Easton, Norton, Mansfield, Foxborough. Um, if you haven't seen pictures of High Rock, go to Semrec's Facebook, uh, it's, there's been some news coverage of it. It really spectacular, state of the art, uh, uh, 911 center, serving these four towns, uh, funded through state grants, uh, paid out of those little surcharges that, uh, are on our cell phone bills and we don't know what they pay for, paid for Semrec. So, um, really, uh, proud of, uh, Rob Verdone and his team, the police and fire chiefs in the communities, particularly Chief Partridge here, Chief Sullivan. Uh, and, uh, it's just a, a great, great project, uh, you know, to, to get a better product, save more than half of your operating costs and get a state of the art capital facility at the end of it is not something we get to do much, uh, in, in government. So, um, really, uh, just a great, uh, great, great day.
Thank you.
I had an opportunity to, to be there and, um, uh, it, it, it is very impressive. I, I got to go into where the dispatch is and it's like being at NASA. It's amazing. I, I, I would think that anybody who has, who, who, who has an opportunity from the select board to, to arrange with Rob or, or with Connor to go there, it's, it's quite impressive. It's quite impressive.
Thanks. Thanks for being there to represent us, Craig. Any, um, notes from the select board, Craig? Anything from you? Mark?
Not tonight.
Jamie?
Thank you. Yeah, to all the hard work that went into, uh, making that possible over a number of years.
Jen?
Just thank you.
I just have a couple of notes that are, are timely, um, and I hope that people know to sign up for the town crier. Um, so this past Saturday was drug takeback day and there was a really incredible response to that. Um, I was there from 10 to 12 and it was open until 2. While I was there, they packed up three huge boxes, um, of meds, uh, and so, uh, that was really great to get those out of the medicine cabinets. Um, but the shops take back is this week at Frothingham Hall from eight o'clock to noon. And, uh, residential shops will be accepted at Frothingham Hall on Barrow Street between eight and 12. They must be secured in a capped puncture resistant plastic container such as a laundry detergent bottle. No loose shops will be accepted. And then also on May 1st is Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, which everybody looks forward to every year. Uh, the Eastern Water Division 37th Annual Household Collection Day on Saturday, May 1st, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the DPW on Center Street. And for more information on the items that are being accepted, go to the Water Division's website and, um, it's got a great list on there as well. So, and the only other thing that I wanted to say is, um, you know, for, for the small businesses in our community to keep checking the Economic Development Council's Facebook page, um, there are a lot of grants that are opening up. Um, there's a s- uh, small, there's a small women's business grant that's out there. Um, the FBA is having another round of funding for restaurants. There's more rounds of applications for the paycheck protection program, the shuttered venue program. So, um, as we get information about grants, that's where we do post them is on the Economic Development Council's Facebook page. So, um, just telling people to take a look at that. And, uh, again, congratulations to Jamie and Jen. You got your first meeting under your belt and, uh, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second Lamb.
Barger, yes?
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks everyone. Have a good night.
Stay safe everybody.
Alright, thank you.